Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public hearing of the -- a public hearing of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, September 29, 2022, at 5:36 PM. A quorum of the Board are physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Summit.
Is there a second?
Second.
The -- having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Zapata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. I would also just note, welcome Trustee Boswell, who's with us by video. Next is the -- an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allow speakers to comment publicly pertaining to the Financial Integrity Rating. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called the dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. And we did not have any sign up for tonight's public hearing, so we will move to our presentation. So our next item will be a presentation on Austin ISD's School Financial Integrity Rating for 2022. Dr. Mays?
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chief Finance, Mr. Ramos.
President Rodriguez, Dr. Mays. To the Board. Before you, we are going to present a report regarding the Austin ISD School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas for 2022. Keeping in mind, this report specifically addresses the 2021 school year, our 2021 financials. So the information you will hear tonight is based on the financials for that school year. With me today presenting is Katrina Montgomery. She is our Assistant Superintendent of Financial Services. Next slide.
Hello, everyone. So today, we're going to give you an overview of the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, which was established in 1999 by the 76th Legislature. The rating system ensures that the Texas Public Schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices and that they improve these practices. The system is designed to encourage Texas Public Schools to better manage their financial resources and to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. As Mr. Ramos stated, the 2022 rating is based on financial data from the 2021 school year. Next. Thank you. So the areas of measurement, in 2022, the rating is comprised of 20 indicators, and it reviews the following areas. The annual financial report, or AFRA, is an audited financials that is done and completed and sent to TEA. Make sure that we are honoring our debt payments, terms, and compliances. Timely payments made to government agencies, for example, TWC, IRS, and TRS. The district's financial solvency, are we paying our liabilities timely? And various other ratios and financial measurements. Austin ISD maintained a superior achievement rating for the 2021-2022 school year, which is required by our strategic plan. The district's overall score decreased from 92 in 2021 to 90 in 2022. And the indicator that was impacted was indicator number 13, of which Mr. Ramos is going to explain in greater detail in a second. So the 2022 results by indicator, these are the 20 indicators we just discussed. We're going to go over a few in detail. Number one, the indicator reads, was the complete annual financial report, or AFRA, and data submitted to the TEA within 30 days of November 27, based on our June 30 fiscal year. And in 2021, it was a yes. In 2022, it was also a yes. If number one is not completed, it is immediate -- it could be an immediate failure. Number three, was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all debt agreements at fiscal year end? Again, 2021 was a yes, and 2022 was also a yes. Number four, did the school district make timely payments to the Teacher Retirement System, or TRS, Texas Workforce Commission, or TWC, or Internal Revenue Service, IRS, and other government agencies? In 2021, it was a yes, and 2022, it was also a yes. So number eight, was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? The max score for this is a 10. In 2021, you will see that we received a 2, as well as in 2022, we also received a 2. And Mr. Ramos is going to talk to this in more detail later. So we're going to skip down to number 13. Was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? And this is where our points were decreased this year. So the maximum score is 10. So 2021, we received 10 points, and this year, we received 8 points. And Mr. Ramos, again, will explain this. Number 15, this, if you look over under 2022, you see that there's a dash or it's zero, and that's because this indicator was not rated due to the pandemic. All other indicators are the same. Mr. Ramos?
Next slide. And so, in one of the areas where we lost the most points is Indicator 8, which measures your current assets to current liabilities. We've had this discussion in the past regarding why we lose points with this indicator. And so what it basically comes down to is, our recapture payment is due in August of every year, over $700 million in this specific school year. However, our fiscal year ends on June 30. So because our fiscal year closes on June 30, the state is saying that we have a high current liability. We owe a large amount of money at the end of our fiscal year. So by paying our recapture payment on time, we are actually penalized. And so for the 21-22 school year, that was the first year that we actually paid our payment early so that we would not be penalized. And based on our calculations, instead of losing 8 points, we believe we'll lose only 4 points. So next year, you'll see a much better score with this indicator, but basically because we paid our recapture payment early. And so that's where, basically, the explanation for this loss in points is. So we do what we have to do, but we lose points because of that. Next slide. And so this is a new area where we actually lost 2 points. We received a total score of 8 compared to 10. Basically, it talks about, was the school's district administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? So TEA gives a threshold of what they expect our administrative costs to be as a district. That ratio is .0855 for districts our size, that is a standard. For the 2021 school year, our ratio was .0868, so we were $1.2 million above the threshold. You also see a graph there that projects what we are anticipating for the 21-22 school year, which is a .0899, so we will lose another 2 points next report. And then for the 22-23 budget year, which is our current year, we show a .0879. That is assuming that we have 100% employment in these categories. But as you know, we made several cuts throughout the district, specifically impacting this budget year. So we are pretty confident that we are going to get back to the standard threshold when we do the -- when they gauge the 22-23 report. So administrative costs, specifically what the expenditures that this addresses are Function 41, which is your typical traditional administrative cost for a district. And then it also includes instructional leadership costs, which is Function 21. And so that includes several departments throughout the district, academic, school leadership, special ed. And so these specifically are centralized positions that actually go to campuses and offer support to those campuses. So just to give you an idea on those two functions, Function 41, we budgeted $16.3 million, and Function 21, $16.5 million. And so we are looking at those two specific functions. Earlier last month, one of the things that we were talking about is looking at areas where our functional per-student spending is above kind of thresholds or what other districts spend, and then diving into that data to see why that is the cause. So these are 2 areas that we will be looking at as part of this budgeting process, again to make sure that we fall back into compliance with TEA's threshold. So we are looking at both of those areas. And then other financial indicators that we like to really highlight as a district are bond rating and financial awards. So as a district, we have a AAA bond rating from Moody's and a AA+ from Fitch. And so those are the highest bond ratings that a school district can achieve in the state of Texas. So we have the highest bond ratings that can be received from a school district. What that really helps us with is selling bonds currently and in the future, and that minimizes the interest rate costs that we, as a district, must pay back for borrowing these funds. We also have several budget and financial reporting awards from the Association of School Business Officials and the Government Finance Office Association. Most recent awards are for the 2021 ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, the 2021 ASBO Meritorious Budget Award, and then in 2020, ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and the 2020 GFOA recognition for implementing best practices in school budgeting. So now I open it up to any questions.
Trustees, any questions? Trustee Boswell?
Hi, thank you for this presentation. I appreciate it. I'm interested, back at Slide 8, item number 13, on the first rating. I'm wondering, as we head into budgeting, I would love the administration's thoughts about how we can get that back under the line, understanding that that really represents making sure that our money is going as much as possible into the classroom, that I understand we need educational leadership and central office administration, but making sure that we're being really thoughtful about that and making sure as much as possible goes into the classroom. So I would just really appreciate budgeting, about how we can get that in balance and what our philosophy is about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Boswell, we'd love you for a second. I know that there's greater detail that Mr. Ramos can provide with regard to what those numbers consist of. I would also point to the fact that we did address some of this last year and some of the cuts that we made, but I'll turn it over to him so he can share a few more details about that area.
And so, again, because this was per the thresholds, our expenditures are higher than other districts with these 2 specific functions. We are going to dive into these numbers and look at, do we have too many expenditures in Function 41 and Function 21? Also, are we coding correctly as a district? So one of the things that we've and my team have noticed is that there are several expenditures that are coded to Function 41, when the best practice is actually those expenditures are coded among multi-functions, depending on what that expenditure specifically entails. And so we are looking at those areas. Also, there are certain personnel that are at the central office level that if they better aptly were moved to the campus level to better serve campuses, that would be a different function as a district. So we are looking at those opportunities as well to bring these thresholds down.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Trustee Boswell, I just want to make sure that I always caption in that this does mean that, you know, we may be looking at some future changes as it relates to staffing, you know, even more so than we did last year. So I just want to point that out to the Board.
Thank you.
Trustees, other questions?
If not, I just want to say thank you very much for all of your steward -- financial stewardship. This really helps the district and us as policymakers make the decisions and investments we need in our district. So really appreciate all the hard work that goes on with getting this kind of a rating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we will adjourn our public hearing, take a short break, and then return to open the regular voting meeting at 6:00 PM. Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Summit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. This meeting is now adjourned at 5:51 PM, and we will return shortly for our regular voting meeting. Thank you. Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, September 29, 2022, at 6:02 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing, and to our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Summit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Pledge to the Texas Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Juror de la edad a la manera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la República que representa una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. On honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Honrolo a la manera de Texas, te juro de la edad de Texas, un estado bajo Dios, único
Thank you, trustees. We'll now move to our game changer items, which is our opportunity to recognize and observe important items happening in AISD and our nation. Dr. Mays, would you please share our first recognition?
Yes, sir. So we'll have our Executive Director, Michelle Wallace, coming up. We've taken a pretty big focus on reading, and so we're happy to celebrate some of our efforts in helping us to move in that direction. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Wallace.
Thank you, Dr. Mays. Good evening, President Rodriguez and trustees. Excited to be here tonight to request recognition for the Defend the Dream Foundation. And we did, on the 15th, have a great event at Oak Springs. Missed you, Trustee Anderson, and just wanted to shout out to Principal Jackson and the librarian there, Alexis Picorni, and her mom, for being there to celebrate the opening of the Discovery Den that Derrick Johnson is starting. And it's the beginning of an initiative with multiple schools. Langford is next, and we're excited about that. So it's my pleasure to request formal recognition from trustees for Derrick Johnson's Defend the Dream Foundation.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson, do you have a recognition statement to share?
Yes. On the behalf of Austin ISD Board of Trustees, it is my honor to recognize Defend the Dream Foundation for their support and commitment to helping transform Austin ISD elementary libraries to inspire reading. The Defend the Dream Foundation is dedicated to providing opportunities and resources for marginalized communities through its DJ's Discovery Den program, where they seek to transform unused spaces at schools into fun and comfortable reading oases that are stocked with hundreds of brand-new, age-appropriate books and flexible, comfortable furniture. On On September 15th, the Defend the Dream Foundation celebrated the grand opening of its first DJ's Discovery Den in Austin at Oak Springs Elementary. This is the first of many Austin AISD spaces that the Defend the Dream Foundation intends to transform to inspire reading. This type of partnership and vision is to be commended. It is with great pride that the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District recognizes and thanks the Defend the Dream Foundation for their partnership and support of Austin AISD students. And on a personal note, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for the book, and I hope I get the opportunity to meet you, and I really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was an awesome day, and we really appreciate his support of our schools and our students. And it just was a great celebration of literacy, and he was inspired by his mother, who was a teacher growing up and wants to bring that inspiration to more children in AISD. We're proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it, and congratulations. Our next recognition is for Hispanic Heritage Month. September 15th was the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, and will go through October 15th, 2022. In addition to the activities, lessons, and special events happening all across Austin during Hispanic Heritage Month, the district is also hosting a Proud to Be Hispanic Virtual Talent Show. This is open to all AISD students, staff, and families. The talent show includes categories for dance, music, singing, and art, and all submissions are eligible to win gift cards from HEB and include both a selection of expert judges and a community selection judged by the highest number of likes on the district's YouTube page. You can also view the submission already received on the Iluca Austin Facebook page. Also, be sure to join the district on October 15th at the AISD Performing Arts Center, where we'll have the winner, where the winner will be invited to perform or display their winning submission. So please visit the district's webpage to learn more. And so, Dr. Mays, would you introduce our Students for Hispanic Heritage Recognition?
I will. Hold on one second, Ms. Allison, because before we do that, we do have another trustee that we want to recognize. If you all can look at the dais, you see a couple of graduation hats over there, and so we know that you do this work and make a significant sacrifice, you know, whether it's standing up here till two and then getting up and going to work at four. We recognize that sacrifice in addition to you furthering your education, and we did want to celebrate you. And so you've been asking for something, and I wanted to make sure that we hooked you up. And so when she goes to graduation this weekend, she'll have her big head up there being recognized, so. So congratulations. These flowers sit over there for you, too, but you at least got that taken care of. And so we... So thank you, Trustee Anderson, for your sacrifice for this district. We appreciate you. We know you'll be rolling off soon, but we thank you for everything that you've done. Also, we have a birthday celebration, so we're going to go ahead and bring in the Aikens mariachi band performing "Las Manitas" for President Rodriguez, and so happy belated birthday.
Oh, this is awesome.
So we do want to thank the Aikens High School Mariachi Band as well as Ms. Susana Diaz-Lopez, their director. So again, y'all give them a round of applause.
Mil gracias por estar aquí.
We need a grito.
Are you about to do a grito?
After we vote for the resolutions tonight, I'm happy to do a grito.
And before Ms. Rosa sneaks out, y'all, I do want to give her a round of applause. She helps coordinate this, she helps feed the babies and take them. So thank you. I'll turn it back over to Trustee Rodriguez. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here celebrating my birthday for the second day in a row. You know, Dr. Mays already said some of these things, but under the president's report, I've got one thing, and that is to talk about this person right here. So tonight's recognition is very special for the board. One of the most important duties of a school district board of trustees is to prepare a mission and vision for a district and monitor our progress in achieving that mission and supporting goals. And this board, in collaboration with the community, set a mission to prepare every student with the knowledge and skills to thrive in college, career, and life. And the district's job is to prepare our students, and we celebrate that achievement with our graduation ceremonies. Trustee Letitia Anderson, when you joined this board, many of us had the great honor of joining you in 2019 when you received your diploma from Garza High School. Now, we are prepared to celebrate you proving our mission, acting our mission, living out our mission as you graduate with your bachelor's degree in healthcare administration this Saturday. And while... While you are leaving the board in November, we know you will just continue your journey of advocating for student support, patient care, embracing being a lifelong learner as you start work on your master's program in healthcare administration. Trustee Anderson, on behalf of the Austin AISD Board of Trustees, congratulations and best of luck in your role as a hospital administrator. And frankly, I don't know who to congratulate, the trustee Anderson there or the trustee Anderson over here. I'll just congratulate both of them and just wish you the best of luck, and I know you're gonna... Your family's really proud, and we are of all of you, of you and your hard work.
Well, y'all got me. This has been a long journey, but I have always set out to inspire. It can be done. I ain't saying it was a piece of cake, but it can be done. And, you know, hopefully, someone who has followed my journey will be inspired. And hopefully, it's the many students I serve, or even if it's a TA who aspires to be a teacher. Ms. Green, I hope you hear me. But thank y'all, it really means a lot. And, you know, I don't like a big fuss behind me because, you know, I'm pretty quiet unless I haven't taken my medicine. But thank y'all so much. It really means a lot. Thank you.
The awesome part, trustee, is that I know that you might be the first one to go through this, but I know that you're going to make sure that for generations, you will not be the last one. So congratulations again. At this time, we're going to move to committee reports, and we'd like to have trustees provide committee reports to us. And Trustee Ashy, can you share the policy report and the report for the Austin Education Fund?
I mean, I can share them, but it's not nearly as fun as the mariachi band and celebrating, Trustee Anderson. I'm very welcome to share them, but I feel like we're going from super fun things to a little more dry content. Well-intentioned and very important content, but yet maybe a little dry. And personal point of privilege, so excited for you, my friend. So. The Board Policy Committee did convene a meeting on Monday, September 12th, at 2:10. Myself, as well as Trustee Foster and Trustee Boswell were present. Also present from administration were Dr. Jacob Reach, Edna Butts, Dr. Laura Stout, Brandy Josak, and Leslie Stevens. The committee discussed EHBAF local, which is a policy that speaks to special education, video and audio monitoring, and the recommendation to clarify that a video recording must be retained until the alleged incident has been resolved, including the exhaustion of all appeals. The revised policy will be presented at the board's October meeting. In addition to that, we will be including the legal policies that accompany. So we will have EHBAF local and EHBAF legal, so that people can see how those two sets of policies complement and address many of the issues that our board has been looking at as it pertains to video and audio monitoring. The committee also discussed whether DC local, which is employment practices, should be amended to require board approval of hires of executive directors and above. The board approved changes to this policy in October 2020 to give the superintendent the sole authority to select and employ all contract and non-contract staff except the internal auditor and board counsel, aligning the policy with the superintendent's contract. The proposed revisions would provide that the superintendent would have the final authority to hire contractual personnel for all positions below the executive director level. The board would approve the hiring of positions at the executive director level and above. In the event such a hire occurs in a month that the board is not scheduled for a voting meeting, the superintendent would be allowed to proceed with such action without board approval and would be required to notify the board of such hiring. This traditionally takes place in the month of July. This policy revision will also be presented at the board's October meeting information session in order to allow us as a board to have that discussion and conversation. In November of 2021, the board approved revisions to BDF local to include provision that a committee member may serve one two-year term with the possibility of serving one additional term. The committee discussed revisions to this policy to permit members of a Community Bond Oversight Committee, the CBOC, to serve three two-year terms, recognizing that the role of the CBOC to oversee bond projects is likely to span more than two to four years. The revisions specify that renewed membership is not automatic to clarify that reappointment of a CBOC member must be affirmatively made by the appointing trustee, and this policy revision will be considered by the board in October as well. We also discussed four policies that are part of the TASB update 119, TASB being the Texas Association of School Boards, which will be considered by the board in October. A revision is recommended to one of those policies, FFH local, to add language stating that discrimination includes race-based hair discrimination based on hair texture and protective styles. We also discussed the possibility of amending DGB local to revise outdated provisions and consider how our consultation agent is selected. Under the current policy, one consultation agent is elected, and the committee discussed whether to permit an association that represents 15% or more of either classified employees and/or non-supervisory professional employees to participate in consultation to give more voice to more employees in alignment with our equity by design model. The committee will continue discussion of this policy at its October meeting. And finally, we discuss revisions to EIC local to determine when and how grades for dual credit and other courses that may not be completed by the third nine weeks are considered for the purposes of calculating local honors. Dr. Stout will survey principals, teachers, and others and return to discuss with the committee at its October meeting. Any changes that we would make to this policy would not impact this year's current graduating class, and we would be able to specify how that would be implemented. We will be meeting again on October 17th at 11:00 AM. And then, would you like me to go ahead and do the Austin Ed Fund? It's more fun. Not to say the policy committee is not fun, it's very fun. It's very fun, right? Trustee Foster is the best. The Austin Ed Fund, they have had a very fun month, in my opinion, and have another fun month coming up. Yesterday, the Austin Ed Fund hosted AISD's first principal-for-a-day event of this calendar year, and partners experienced a morning in the life of an AISD campus at nearly 50, five-zero-fifty, schools across our district and met up for lunch to share their reflections. I would have loved, I'm sorry, I missed that, on the experience. We are grateful for the campus principals and partners that participated in the day, and thanks to President Rodriguez for attending the luncheon welcoming participants. The Austin Ed Funds Inspire the Future Luncheon will take place on October 25th in person, and we hope you all will join us for the celebration of Austin AISD. The luncheon is also the largest fundraising event supporting the grants program. To learn more or purchase a ticket or sponsorship for this year's event, please visit www.austinedfund.org. On September 6th, the Ed Fund and Office of Innovation and Development hosted a Thunder Roundtable event at the Performing Arts Center. Over 30 funding partners attended and heard remarks from Dr. Mays, a presentation by Ed Ramos and Matias Segura on the bond, and panel discussion also featuring Elizabeth Casas. Partners expressed appreciation in hearing more from AISD leadership, and special thanks to Trustee Boswell for attending. Thank you, Trustee Boswell. I know you're not here in person, but we're appreciative of you. Of course... Of course, the Ed Fund is proud to have partnered with Derek Johnson's Defend the Dream Foundation, as was mentioned earlier in tonight's meeting, to make the literacy improvements at Oak Springs happen, and look forward to the next project at Langford Elementary School.
Thank you, trustee Ashi. Trustee Boswell, can you share the intergovernmental report?
Hi, yes, I'm happy to. We have three meetings to share updates about, one on September 7th, one on September 14th, and one on September 20th. So I'll start with September 7th. We convened a meeting at 9:00, 10:19 a.m. on Wednesday, September 7th. Trustees Boswell and Singh were present. Also present from the administration were Dr. Jacob Reach and Edna Butts. During the meeting, we reviewed legislative priorities submitted by community members. Thank you to everyone who shared their thoughts about priorities that we should consider. And we also reviewed priorities developed by other school districts, education-related associations, and other entities. We discussed which priorities aligned with ours, which priorities we had independently, and which should be in kind of a set of overarching priorities, and which should be included in an appendix to our priorities. And then we decided to meet again on September 14th to discuss the final set of priorities to be considered at our October meeting, and we adjourned at 11:57 a.m. We met again on September 14th at 2:10 p.m. Trustees Boswell, Zapata, and Singh were present, and from the administration, Dr. Jacob Reach, Ed Ramos, and Edna Butts. And then we also had legislative consultants Marty J. Leon and MJ Nikio present for a portion of the meeting. We discussed legislative priorities regarding school funding with CFO Ed Ramos and legislative consultants Marty J. Leon and MJ Nikio, who have been consulting. And we talked about the desire for the committee to pursue efforts that benefit all districts with funding. The committee reviewed legislative priorities and additional input, and comments from individual trustees. Edits were made and discussed, and we set another meeting for September 20th to further refine. We also discussed at that September 14th meeting, an advocacy advisory body, and the committee would like to recommend a board-appointed advocacy advisory body comprised of parents, business, community members, teachers, administrators, students, and others, who would become familiar with the board's legislative priorities, help shape the priorities, and engage with the community and the legislature regarding those priorities. And we scheduled a meeting for September 20th to review that as well, and adjourned that meeting at 3:12 p.m. And then finally, our September 20th meeting convened at 9:03 a.m. Trustees Boswell, Zapata, and Singh were present. Edna Butts from administration was also present. We reviewed two new assessment-related priorities to add to the final recommended legislative priorities, and those will be submitted to the board in October. We also discussed further the proposed advocacy advisory committee, and are proposing a standing Board of Trustees Committee to assist the district in advancing the board's legislative priorities beginning next year following legislative session, also to recommend legislative priorities to the district and the board. It's too late for a body to make recommendations this year, but not too late for them to get involved in advocacy. We reviewed some draft bylaws, and the governance committee will discuss the creation of the advisory committee and determine next steps. And we adjourned the meeting at 10:19 a.m. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Boswell. Now, I have one report around the Austin ISD Safety and Security Committee. We held a special call meeting this past Tuesday to discuss the findings from the recently conducted State of Texas Intruder and Safety audits. And as required under the new guidance, there's also a scheduled discussion for tonight's meeting, and our next meeting of the Safety and Security Committee is scheduled for October 11th at 5:30 p.m. Trustees, are there any other committee or training reports to share tonight? Trustee Lugo.
Thank you, Board President. Yes. So on September 14th, the Audit Committee convened. Although I was not able to attend, trustees Ashi, Zapata, and Wagner were able to meet, and I really appreciate and send my gratitude to my colleagues for carrying forward so that we don't lose the momentum of this important work. Gibson Consulting, the internal auditor, gave us a status update regarding the school years, so 2223 audit projects, which are focused on human resources and construction management. And it's worth noting that there will be a third-party auditor assisting with the construction management audit portion. Gibson also briefed the committee on Gibson's review of the district's let's-talk data, which includes information that the public, employees, staff, students can report anonymously should there be any concerns. So they provided the committee with a briefing of their review, and Gibson will continue to provide monthly briefings to the committee. The next meeting will occur in November. Date has not yet been set.
Thank you, trustee Lugo. Trustees, any other committee or training reports? If not, thank you very much, and we will move on to the next item, which is under the superintendent's report. Dr. Mays?
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. I did want to thank Michael Urban. He's not, he wasn't here with his band this morning, but he's the principal at Akins High School, and we appreciate their help, the students helping, helping us recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, and we invite you all to join us in observing National Hispanic Heritage Month. This year's theme is UNIDOS, inclusivity for a stronger nation. Austin ISD is hosting an open call to all AISD students pre-K through 12th grade, families and staff through October 9th. And again, look for submission information and rules online. We look forward to this wonderful event celebrating our Latino community, and so if you can go to the next slide. As you all know, we've been working really hard out there to get as much information out there possibly regarding Austin ISD's 2022 bond. We are 40 days away from election. I'll say it again, we are 40 days away from Election Day on November 8th, and it's hard to believe that it's right around the corner. I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge all of our staff who have given up evenings and weekends and staff, to staff tables, schools and districts, and community events to give presentations to various groups. And so if you're in the room and you've attended one of these events, please stand up. Stand up. Stand up. There you go. So they've all been out and about throughout this community, spreading information, and we couldn't do this work without you all, so I did want to say thank you all. We appreciate you. Next slide, please. So I want to continue with my appreciation for staff and acknowledge the awesome human capital team. Last Saturday, we held a job fair at Travis High School. We were really pleased with the number of people who came to learn more about career opportunities. I am excited to announce the launch of Austin, I'm sorry, I was excited to see, I think we did 40, 46, I believe, is what we hired on the spot that day. So I don't see Brandy in it. Is that right? 46? So I wanted to make sure that we recognized her, and like I said again, we'll be hosting those events throughout. But thank you, Ms. Hosack, for your first big initiative, so. And you can see the numbers right there. Can you go ahead and go to the next slide? I'm excited to announce the launch of Austin ISD, again, for Read for the Record, and so that's one of our initiatives. For those of you that don't know, I'm a reader, and one of my favorite places to be is in the public library, so I have a real library fetish. So when I go to different places, I visit local libraries. So the Library of Congress, as well as Washington University, as like those are two of the best libraries that I've visited. And so I want to share my love of reading with all of our students. I know our librarians do an amazing job, and one of my goals with this initiative, this Read for the Record initiative, is to shine a spotlight on the important work that they do. And so you can go to the next slide, Jacob. Our upcoming events include a million-minute challenge, and the goal of having our community read 1 million minutes this school year. It includes a reading competition among elementary and middle schools. The campuses that logs the most minutes will receive a special prize, and more detailed information will be provided in the coming weeks, and so stay tuned. Another event, again, is Read for the Record, a one-day challenge for elementary schools to participate in a shared reading experience. Each year, Read for the Record brings together millions of adults and children as they read the same book on the same day, building community through reading. On Thursday, October 27th, the featured book is Nigel and the Moon, and each campus will receive a copy of the book for each pre-K through third-grade classroom. And so what you see there is I've already adopted my campus, so I'll be at Oak Springs, and that's my class. I have a combined class, and so I'll read with those students every month until the year end. So I'm inviting everybody else to join us. Next slide, please. So again, I'm excited about our launching of the AISD Literacy Mentors, and so a reading initiative to increase children's success in school through read-aloud experiences with volunteers while at the same time encouraging male involvement in our schools. And so I think we heard you loud and clear, trustee Lugo, as well as others. We know that this is a population that we want to attack, and so I think it's cool when they get a chance to see us out there embracing the notion of reading. And through this initiative, male volunteers commit to one hour per month to read a book to a class of third-grade students. And so again, you saw my class just a few minutes ago. The program will be available at Andrews, Barrington, Campbell, Go Valley, Oak Springs, and Pecan Springs. We actually got volunteers filled out for that really, really quickly, so we're actually looking at expanding the opportunities for that. Next slide, please. Next, we have our celebrations. You can go ahead and go to the next one. It was my honor to give my first Golden Rave of the year to Oak Springs Elementary Assistant Principal Lakeisha Brown, who has been with the district for 21 years. I'm proud to recognize Ms. Brown for her dedication to the Oak Springs students and staff and support of the Dolphin community, for serving as a co-pilot, Principal Jackson to stepping in to teach classes when needed. And I mean, this Assistant Principal Ms. Brown literally was teaching classes last year, and again, I know that that was in the midst of some other challenges, but she stepped up to meet the needs of our students. Next slide, please. A big congratulations to our high school seniors who have been recognized as a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. 34 students earned this honor with their hard work to achieve top scores on the 2021 PSAT. 21 other semifinalists are at Lhasa, three at Austin High, three at Bowie, and one each at Akins, Anderson, and McCallum. Next slide. Congratulations to our high school bands who placed in last weekend's Capital City Marching Festival. McCallum High School won the first place, and Austin High School took third. McCallum was also awarded Best Color Guard in the 4A Division. Next slide. It's been a big month for our high school musicians, so the Akins Percussion Ensemble was selected to perform at the 2023 Music for All National Percussion Festival. This is the nation's, I said the nation's, not Texas, not region, but the nation's premier non-competitive music festival. These students will get to expand their knowledge at educational workshops and perform at top venues, where they will receive evaluation and feedback from a panel of renowned conductors and clinicians. Last slide. So four of our schools have earned the Star of Distinction Award at the Texas Association of School Boards 2022-2023 Exhibit of School Architecture. All four campuses, Cassis, Norman Sims, Sanchez, and Ann Richards, were modernized as a part of the 2017 bond, and so thank you to everyone whose hard work made this possible. So I see Mr. Segura back there bobbing his head. Let's give him a round of applause. And that concludes the superintendent's report. I'll turn it back over to trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Dr. Mays. Trustees, any questions on any of those presentations? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the notice of intruder detection audit. Dr. Mays?
So Dr. Reach will be coming up. We do want to take a moment to thank our principals. We know that this has been a significant transition, as you all have worked relentlessly to keep our building safe. And so again, we recognize that that is a lot of work on our principals, assistant principals, custodial staff, as well as security guards. So thank you all.
Thank you, Superintendent Mays, Board President Rodriguez, and Board of Trustees. When I last met with you at our August meeting, we gave an update on safety and security in AISD, and as part of that, we shared some information about the state mandated their wording, intruder detection audits. Since that time, we have had at least 12 audits occur at Austin ISD, and following new guidance from Texas State, which we received last week, I'm kind of late last week, we got additional information that following any audits, and following the notice that we receive, that a district will need to, at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, provide notice that an intruder detection audit was conducted and a corrective action was put into place due to the findings. So that is what we are doing for this item, this agenda. We will be bringing these back at future agendas if and when, or I just should say if, if we have other findings on future audits. So as part of this item, we want to ensure the board that we have worked with this campus to address these findings. We have developed a plan. We have looked at training staff on what is best safety for those campuses, and we've also met with our Safety and Security Committee for the district. Our next step will be that within 45 days of when we receive notice, we will provide to the Texas State School Safety Center our plan that we discussed with that campus, the minutes from our Safety and Security Committee meeting showing that we've discussed it, and the minutes from our board meeting showing that we have updated the public and the board that this has occurred and that we have taken steps to address it. I do want to let you know that due to the sensitive details regarding the audits, we will not be sharing the name of campuses or what were those individual findings, but I do want to assure our public, assure our board, assure our students, most importantly, that we have taken immediate steps to address anything that was found, and that we do know that our campuses are very safe places to be. If there are additional questions, I do want to make you aware that the state of Texas has said that such information and such details are allowed in an executive session of the board, and so that is something that the administration can provide and that we are posted for in our executive session meeting tonight. If there's any questions on the overall process, I'd be happy to answer that. Otherwise, more than happy to share greater details in our executive session.
Thank you. Trustees, any other, any questions? I think as, just as co-chair of the Safety and Security Committee, just one additional fact that I just want to add, that the Safety and Security Committee did go into executive session and did have a discussion on specifics. I just wanted the public to understand that there is accountability, it's just that it's inside of the executive session around the specifics, so they are aware. Trustee Foster?
Thank you, Jake, Dr. Reach. One of the items that, wasn't an item that came up, but a comment that came up from a participant on the committee who's a local teacher, who's one of our teachers. He sort of lifted up and honored the importance of the work and had really good specific insights from his experience as a teacher, and one of the things that he was interested in seeing is additional public participation. And so it's important to lift up that this is, you know, a public committee, you can make public comment ahead of time, and there is opportunity to participate.
Thank you very much, because trustee Foster is a member of that Safety and Security Committee, and we did make a commitment that we would in our board meeting, and we will do that in this meeting and in our subsequent ones in October, is to remind the public that we do have meetings and to invite them to participate in the public testimony engagement piece, which again, October 11th at 5:30 p.m. So thank you again for raising that, because it was one of our teachers that made sure that we raised the issue up for participation. Trustees, any other comments? If not, thank you, Dr. Reach. Next item is a scorecard discussion and review of items 5.1 to 5.4, college, career, and military readiness. Dr. Mays?
Thank you, President Rodriguez, and so we do have our team coming forward, and so similar to what you saw with student discipline, you know, our goal is to address systems and remove barriers and break down silos, and so they're coming forward to share the joint work. I think we have our counseling team missing from this group, but they'll be able to share with you all of the work that they're doing collaboratively to support our students. Dr. Fanning?
Good evening, President Rodriguez, and happy birthday. Trustee Anderson, congratulations to you and to our Board of Trustees and interim superintendent Dr. Mays. I'm Dr. Cresslin Fanning, Executive Director in the Office of School Leadership, and here with my team.
Tammy Seater, CTE Director.
Dr. Elizabeth Severance, Director of Advanced Academics.
So we're excited to be here today. We have many members of our team here from the Office of Academics and the Office of School Leadership with us in the, in the room with us today. So bringing together information regarding Scorecard Goal Five. So the College Career Military Readiness Department, we really had the pleasure of presenting on Scorecard Goal Five during our April voting meeting. So today's presentation, we're really going to focus in on just high-level overview. to focus in on just high-level overview of our preliminary progress that you'll see for GPM 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4, and just share those improvement strategies that we're implementing this school year. So before we get started, I definitely want to make sure that in the presentation tonight that I framed for you, that the Texas Education Agency, under House Bill Three, they annually award districts the CCMR Outcomes Bonus Funding. And so that funding is generated based upon the number of annual graduates who demonstrate college career and military readiness in excess of the threshold for three cohorts. That's for annual graduates who are economically disadvantaged, annual graduates who are not economically disadvantaged, and annual graduates who are enrolled in a special education program. So just bringing all three of those together for that threshold. And so what we can say is that our CCMR Outcomes Bonus, it, what it has in common is that all of the graduates, they really need to meet college readiness standards on the SAT, the ACT, or the Texas Success Initiative Assessment, the TSI-A two. The preliminary estimate of about 34% for overall Goal Five was released by TEA in February of 2022. So the estimate is really based upon actual TSI and IBC outcomes, those industry-based certifications. But since actual direct to college, when they actually enroll, those enrollment records, they're just not yet available to us. And TEA, they use a three-year average, combining that college enrollment from higher ed data from the class of 2017, the class of 2018, and the class of 2019 to get those annual graduates average. And so each district, they generate the college enrollment estimates from that. But right now, TEA has not given us those estimates by campus level. And so we'll be able to bring you back that enrollment data later this fall when TEA reconciles the 2020 annual graduates from the CCMR Outcome Bonus student listings. And they'll provide the actual enrollment data, and they'll publish the final 2020 student listings during that time. And we'll make sure that we come back and provide that update from final Goal Five for you all, and campus level reports at that time as well. So regarding the threshold information, walking you through the, the table that we had for our goal progress monitoring tool, that preliminary data that you see that you have, and it's a part of your board documents, you'll see that for our economically disadvantaged students, we needed 201 graduates to meet that 11% threshold. And we estimate that 627 of those 2020 graduates will meet the CCMR Outcomes Bonus Criteria, which means that 426 economically disadvantaged 2020 graduates qualified for the CCMR Outcomes Bonus. And then what you'll see on the next row of that table is that our non-economically disadvantaged students, we needed 646 graduates to meet the 24% threshold. So we estimate that about 1,865 that you'll see there of the 2020 graduates will meet the CCMR Outcome Bonus Criteria, which means that 1,219 of our non-economically disadvantaged graduates will qualify for the Outcomes Bonus. But keep in mind that this is the preliminary data, and that I'm just walking you kind of through the outcome so that you can know what to expect when we bring those final reports. And just lastly, our Special Education Student Group wanted to show that for you there on the chart, that there's not a minimum threshold regardless if they are economically disadvantaged. But we estimate about 38 of the Special Education 2020 graduates will also qualify for the Outcomes Bonus. So based upon that preliminary data that you've seen, overall progress, we are developing in our status and just continuing to work together amongst all of our teams, as well as our counseling team that's working really diligent with us as well. Our Humanities Department comes together and works with, with us as well. So I'm going to transition now, Jacob, to our slide deck. And I want to make sure that we keep in mind that the strategies that we're going to bring to you tonight, we're really going to utilize those to impact our current scholars that are a part of the 2023 graduate cohort that are sitting in our classrooms today right now. This is the work that we are affecting right now, and that is going to be reflected on the Scorecard Goal until the 2024, 25 school years when we'll be able to see that data. Next slide, please. So for GPM 5.1, the TSI-A Criteria, so this monitoring report that was provided to you, it states that 54% of our 2021 graduates identified as economically disadvantaged met TSI Criteria. And a subsequent, and the subsequent page of that said that it was 58%. So I wanted to bring it to your attention that on the first page of that data, it should have read 58%, and I wanted to make sure that we made that correction. However, we still didn't reach our goal of 64%, meaning that we didn't reach the goal by six percentage points. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. But we're focusing in on increasing that percentage of our economically disadvantaged students to really complete the TSI, an increase from 46% to 72% by August 2026. So we've implemented a series of strategies that all of our campuses are going to work on, and we're ensuring that, going to make sure that our scholars are on track to meet those goals moving forward. So we purchased our viable curriculum, which I brought to you before, Mastery Prep Collaboration with all of our ELAR and math teachers. We're working with Gear Up, we're working with Avid, API, offering monthly professional development for all of our teachers, for our college access partners, and any of those teachers and staff that have that influence, working with our scholars inside their classrooms, for those TSI bootcamps, and just any other times that they provide that instruction on those campuses. So it's really great to see that everybody's coming together. We're pushing in from both ends, starting with eighth grade to 12th grade, and making sure that we're pushing in on both ends to get these scholars what they need and get them prepared for the TSI. And just continuing to leverage our partnerships with API, with Avid, with many of the others that I spoke about, UT, Advised Texas, Comey-Mandray Breakthrough, everyone is really coming together to rally with us and support us. And we're really excited about strengthening our partnerships with them. And embedding that into our curriculum with our geometry and English courses is really important, that we make sure that the teachers embedded into the curriculum that they already have in the classroom. Specifically, looking at our English III and English IV classrooms has really been great to do that. So we're going to continue to conduct TSI testing throughout the school year. And our data, it does show us that we're not testing TSI as much as we could. And so we're going to be looking for opportunities to do that in collaboration just with many of our, our partners that we have as well. We had Summer Bridge, which was another opportunity that we were able to push in and work with our incoming ninth graders that were transitioning from eighth grade and had elected to be a part of Programs of Choice. And so we really want to make sure that we continue to systematically develop that in eighth grade. It's important that we get out on the campuses of our middle schools to really take care of this and make sure that we're offering them the opportunity. Next slide. GPM 5.2, it states that 14.5% of our 2021 annual graduates who are economically disadvantaged earned at least 12 hours of college credit, and our goal was 16%. So while we didn't meet this GPM, we're still continuing to tackle this challenge. The improvement is really based on three areas. We need to develop 12 hours of dual credit, putting that into a bundle for all of our campuses. We're going to continue to work with ACC, working with UT Onramps, to put that bundle together so that we can have a 12-hour package put together for each of our campuses. And we may have multiple options and ways to be able to do that. One thing that we did is we met with ACC, with Chancellor Rhodes, and his leadership team to really talk about how can we get in front of this with 12 hours. We talked about having the CTE dual credit pieces that don't require the TSI, and taking a look at what our surrounding districts are doing to get anywhere from six to nine hours of what we've seen them be able to do. We want to be able to do that as well. And so we made really great strides with working with ACC in August to be able to do that. So I'm pleased to offer that. And just continuing to work with our CTE courses to do the dual credit for those classes as well, and then working with Onramps to improve that plan, as well as making sure that our withdrawal policy is really strong, that we're working on interventions with our scholars and the Academic Success Coaches that we have at Austin Community College, that really are working with our scholars to make sure that if they have any issues in their classrooms, with their professors, with textbooks, any issues with their dual credit pieces, that we have Academic Success Coaches that are at ACC, they're also coming over to our campuses to work with our scholars. Next slide, please. GPM 5.3 talks about our industry, our industry-based certifications, where 8% of our economically disadvantaged 2021 graduates earning an industry-based certification compared to our 9% goal. So the overall goal for CTE is really to have our graduating seniors leave with an industry-based certification that is aligned with our programs of study. We want to make sure that it is germane to the four years of where they're taking those CTE courses, that the certification that they leave with has been aligned with that as well. And specifically, just increasing those certifications for those, for the economically disadvantaged students to 15% by 2026. So the current intermediate goal, it really has been to increase those IBCs by 10% per campus each year. And to be able to do that, just making sure that we've aligned with that third version that TEA just came out with for the IBC list. There's a third list that has come out. So they'll currently be running the current list and a new list at the same time. And a few of our cohorts will have the option to choose from both of those IBC lists. And then it will do a phase-out approach, and they'll go on to version three to where it's a new list of IBC opportunities for those scholars. Ms. Seater, you want to?
Next slide, please. So going forward, there's our, these are some of our strategies that we're, we're going to be working on this year. Our, our goal is to improve awareness across the district, to make sure our parents, our scholars know that these IBCs are available. So you could read some of those strategies that we're going to be doing. And then we're also going to progress monitor and work with our principals to keep our teachers on track.
Next slide. So finally, for 5.4, GPM 5.4, only 16.3% of economically disadvantaged students enrolled in grades K nine through 12 last year completed at least one AP or IB course compared to our 19% goal. We are continuing to work to increase enrollment and success. We are collaborating with academics and school leadership on working towards a universal choice sheet. This would help include all AP course offerings and let student choice drive some of the master schedule and eventual course offerings. We continue to find ways to provide information and community outreach about the benefits of AP, IB, and other advanced courses, options to students and families. We are also aware of the need to ensure students do more than enroll, that they succeed in their AP and IB courses. This year, we have enhanced our AP teacher support by providing direct communication to campus AP coordinators and AP teachers. We are reviewing our 2022 AP test scores to find successes in order to learn from those teachers and campuses. Additionally, we also understand that AP advanced course pathway starts much earlier than their first AP course. Therefore, we continue to collaborate with Avid, Gifted and Talented, and early college programs to share information about advanced pathways in earlier grades. One specific way we're working on addressing this equity gap in our GT Gifted and Talented population among students experiencing poverty. We've added to our district-wide professional learning, and we've recently been, received a Javits grant to improve gifted and talented identification of students experiencing poverty, as well as emergent bilingual students and students with disabilities, so we can continue to support them on their advanced pathways. And the next slide.
So overall, our College Career Military Readiness Department, we're going to continue to implement our progress monitoring measures across all of our goals, so that we can make sure that we're taking a look at what we have in front of us and taking a look at where we're going. It's important that we do this on a continuous basis. Our team, we meet together, probably Tammy and I meet every week. She's probably sick of me. We meet every week. Seven, I meet every other week. But we do come together with our counseling team. We come together with our principals, our campuses, our APs, really making sure that we're putting the data in front of us so that we can anticipate what we have ahead, and making sure that we get our scholars everything that they need to be successful. So we're going to definitely continue those intentional progress monitoring efforts for all of our goals. We're also going to take a look at administering more career assessment in the middle school, especially with sixth grade. We know that we have investigating careers happening there. That's an excellent opportunity to make sure that our sixth graders have that opportunity for awareness and exploration. We really have to make sure we're intentional about using the tool that we have available, which is Naviance, to be able to do that career assessment. And it's really going to help them with their options as they're looking at their choice sheets, and helping them to promote that advanced academic option and the IBC attainment. That vertical alignment piece is really important from middle school to high school, to really make sure that it is that pathway that's going to lead them to be completers and earn that IBC, earn that Level One Certificate, or earn that Associate's Degree, or whatever their post-secondary option is. We want to be sure that we're supporting them every step of the way. And just continuing to just support them with elementary awareness with our new Future Ready Initiative. We're really excited about that. We're hosting a Promising Practices for Elementaries. We think it's important that we get in front of our practitioners to talk about how do we do this for elementary at an early age. And so in October, we are hosting an event at the PAC called Promising Practices in Elementary for College Career Military Readiness. We're also going to begin our Future Ready Awareness Days every first Friday. We had such an overwhelming response on our National College Colors Day, which was the first, which was the, what is the first Friday in September. And so we want to continue to bring that back. We had, we heard from parents and from our community saying, we want to continue to do this. And so we didn't want to just focus in on the college days. We wanted to do career and military in any post-secondary option that they selected. So we're calling it our Future Ready Initiative. So we're excited to see our elementary kids, see the Mays kids in their Houston Tillys shirts again. And we're also going to have our Education Go Get It Week, a week-long of intentional activities throughout the district, making sure that we're focusing in on our post-secondary readiness, and also some college visits that we know, and career visits that we know that seeing is believing, and getting them out there on those campuses, getting them into the workforce so that they can see these things, it really does truly make a difference.
Thank you all. Thank you.
So trustees, thank you all very much for the presentation. Trustees, now is the time for us to ask questions on the current vision. Our goal tonight is monitoring and ensuring our reality matches the vision presented. So when asking questions, we should try to focus on the data presented, asking questions about who, what, why, and how. So trustees, any questions? Trustee Ashi?
Thank you for this, and thank you all for your hard work. As somebody who has a graduate from AISD, I'm very appreciative of all of the work that you have done in preparing my daughter, and eventually, hopefully, my son, for post, a post-high school life. So thank you very much. I do have a question about, maybe if you could kind of speak to some of the challenges that we have. I love, and, and to be very clear, I do love that we offer so many options. And I recognize that we have a finite number of students who have a finite number of hours in the day, and a finite, finite number, amount of energy, and an abundance of interests. So how, are, what do you see as some of the biggest challenges to meeting these percentages when, when we off, like sometimes meaning, I guess maybe we're offering so many things, and, and sometimes they're, they kind of compete with one another? So how, how do we, how do we help with that piece? Does that make, I don't know if I'm, I apologize for bumbling through the question. But that, to me, is one of those that always pops out at me. If we are offering Onramps, and dual credit, and CTE, and all of these opportunities, and we want to see all of those increase every year, and yet we have a finite number of students. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And, and the challenge there is that we have to make sure that as they are going through their choice sheets, as they're taking a look at all of their options, that we're sharing with their parents, sharing with those scholars, and it really truly is about what's a best fit for that particular scholar. If you have an older child, what works for them may not work for your second child, may not work for your third child. You really have to figure out what program is going to be a best fit for that specific scholar. And so really sharing that narrative with the parents, sharing that narrative with our scholars to make sure that they know they have options to choose from, but what works for you. And that's why we do the career interest survey at such an early age, and we possibly could even back it up as early as fourth or fifth grade. And we can speak to some of our partners from Breakthrough and Avid about how can we And we can speak to some of our partners from Breakthrough and Avid about how can we get in front of them earlier to talk about what is it that interests them? I think that's important. We start with sixth grade, but we, with the Promising Practices, we're going to be talking about how do we get this in elementary so that they can start seeing that? And I know Ms. Caesar works with Project Lead the Way in our CTE department. And so that's another way to have them engaged with those different choices and choosing the one that is a best fit for them. That really has been the bigger.
And I'll also just add to that, I think there's also a lot of collaboration. So we represent multiple departments coming to present this information. And that also for students that, and families that it's not necessarily that they have to just pick one. So students can take AP and OnRamps and Dual Credit. It doesn't have to be one and none. So it is an option of making sure that we're, students know they have choices.
Trustee Ashi too, I think that, to your point, one of the things that we started working on last year was our program expansion and alignment efforts. And so because we have so many choices, it's like, okay, what's actually working at this campus or for this vertical team? Or, you know, where do we see those students gravitating to? I know we have the slogan, "Have it all," but we don't have to, you know, give it all at every campus, you know, and water it down in the way that we've seen it watered down. And so I know that the team is really looking across the system to make sure that that gets addressed too.
So is that, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of read between the lines a little bit, Dr. Mason, and, and to all of you, and maybe you can kind of help me clarify, does that mean we would continue with student sharing and those types of opportunities? Should a program not be offered on a particular campus? We would continue with that to encourage opportunities?
Absolutely. Student sharing is a viable option for our scholars. We've, we've, we've heard that some of them, they want to continue to stay at their home school. They grew up in the neighborhood, they want to stay there. But there's a program that's being offered somewhere else that they want to participate in. So student sharing gives them that opportunity to go and take those courses, but then still be embedded into their home school or their community school as well.
And then to kind of jump back to something you said just a second ago, you were saying they can do more than one. So then, okay, so my question would be, when we look at that, let's say somebody does decide to do OnRamps and an AP course, or a Dual Credit course and an AP course. When you are looking at the accumulation of hours, because for example, I know that some AP courses can result in college credit. But to my understanding in the CCMR, that it's not calculated in the same way, right? So if, is that correct? Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Meaning if you take an AP course, it doesn't, it doesn't count towards the 12 hours of college credit type thing?
So with the way that it's written in our GPM, it talks about our economically disadvantaged scholars that complete at least 12 college hours. So with that, it's completing the course. Some of them will elect to take the exam. And if they make a three, four, or five, they will receive that college credit. And the same way it works for our IB, and I'll let Dr. sit.
And the AP and IB, as Dr. Mason said, is not currently included in that five point, the 12 hours because it is not based on a transcript. The college credit being awarded for AP or IB courses is based on how the student performs on the test, based on the students taking the exam and how they do on the exam at the end of the year. So that's where the 5.4 is really talking about the AP course completion. It is not currently calculated or added in how students experiencing poverty who pass their AP exam is not calculated into any of these other Goal 5 or progress measures.
And I think, I think that's probably the part where I think I would love to learn more about how that, how those work together. Because if you're taking a certain number of AP courses, then let's say you want to do an extracurricular activity or something else. And like, how does that compete in their schedules, in a student's schedule? How are they able to follow their interests and do those things in addition to kind of these competing factors? And what does that mean? And what does that look like when we have our very pretty graphs that come to the Board of Trustees? Does, I did, sometimes it just feels like we are, we are offering so many wonderful things, which are, which are great. And yet sometimes are we cutting ourselves at the knees a little bit in some way that we are miss, we're not actually seeing kind of the true picture of what all of our students are coming away with? Does that make sense?
And we have a wonderful counseling department. They do a great job, Dr. Twyla Williams' team, Dr. Jane Ross, they do a wonderful job of explaining what those options are and how it will be impacted in your schedule. I know for us with CTE, some of those classes are double-blocked, so it takes up a little bit more room in your schedule. And so we really have to talk to our scholars about that early on. If this is an area that you're choosing, understand that when you get here, about your junior, senior year, that practical piece will be there and it will be double-blocked, which means that you do have to make a choice and say, "Do I want to continue on with this and become the completer during the four years? Or do I want to select something different and then move out of that space?" But it's definitely a counseling piece that we work in tandem with them to make sure that we're sharing that narrative.
And do you feel like sometimes that having to choose so early can, can be a challenge for some of our students?
It's definitely a challenge because a lot of our scholars, you know, just with the endorsements, having to choose your endorsement so early. A lot of them, they, they just may not know really what they're, what they want to do. They may not know exactly what area that they want to go in, but they found some type of interest. And that's why it's so important for us to have these engaging hands-on pieces, such as the college visits, the career visits, going out into the community, bringing the guest speakers in so they can really hone in on, "Well, what is it that I like to do and what is it that I'm good at so I can find that pathway and go ahead and start that, you know, in, in seventh grade with my principal's classes if I'm doing CTE eighth grade and then moving on to ninth grade if that's something that I choose to do?" We have to start early.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee Ashi. Trustee Anderson?
Thank you for this presentation. You know, I'm big on the industry-based certifications. And I really appreciate that, you know, y'all are looking at elementary. A lot of times, students at elementary are, and, and I'll just, because every time I mention it blows me away, at Cunningham, the Test Kitchen, like students being exposed to that and, you know, learning about the, the science of cooking like in elementary. So they're already being shaped, you know, to, maybe they've already been exposed to culinary, but, you know, I, I've always said, and I'm glad y'all finally heard me. So my, my question is, I was looking at, when I was looking at your presentation, the one thing that we've gotten a little better, but I, I still see improvements needed is showcasing the programs that we do offer. And it has always been, you know, word of mouth. Like I'm just, I'm pretty sure even as a trustee, there's still a lot of programs that I don't know about. And when I do hear this, like, wow, I didn't even know we had that. And so how, how can we be intentional with that for students who, you know, maybe I have an interest in teaching? And I don't know that we have programs around here that offer that. So how do we reach those students? Or maybe I want to do HVAC, you know, how do we reach those students? How, how are we ensuring that the families that really have an interest in that know that we have it? And we showcasing what we have, like, hey, that's what we got? So how are we doing that piece?
You know, one way is we're going to have to make sure that with our SSIG, with our guide, with all of our course offerings, I know that Chief Kossis and the team has been working on making sure that we have some visuals that are going to be going out to all of our scholars and parents. We have to make sure that everything is listed in that guide and that it gets out into the hands of our parents and our scholars. We also have to make sure that seeing is believing, that we don't just stay here and ask for them to come to us. We have to go to them. So whether it's going out into these different community events, doing some community outreach, going into the community, the neighborhoods, the apartments, wherever we have to, to make sure that we're showcasing those CTE options as well. As well as advanced academics, it's important that we get out into the community. Everybody doesn't do social media, so they're not going to see the pictures. Everybody is not on Facebook or Twitter to see all the wonderful things that we post. So we need to make sure that we're reaching them in a different manner, that we're going to them. And we can do some showcases at the elementary campuses. I think that's going to be important for us to get out on those campuses and take them there. We have some internships that are happening as well that we've been sharing. And we want to continue to make sure that we're sharing those opportunities with those scholars. Because that's the hands-on piece that they want to be, be a part of. But how can we do that and take that early? We have to do it early. And so I think that going to the elementaries and, and doing that work there and involving them will definitely help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, other questions? Trustee Sapathan, Trustee Lou?
So a couple of things, when you mentioned, thank you for the presentation. This really excites me because I, I was part of the Vocational Office of Education in high school. And that really, really helped me become that secretary. I wanted to be like in Bewitched. It seemed like it was an easy job. You could dress up. It was, and, but it helped me work part-time because we were eight children with a single widowed mom. And I was able to work at IRS half-day. And so that really helped build my skills after graduation. I mean, even during the summer, I was able to work at the federal building and anywhere really because of those skills. I didn't know people didn't type 150 words a minute, you know? And so, so that did prepare me. And I don't know why, I mean, I mean, I, I know several years ago, I worked, I was trying to work with the office that works with CTE when they were at the O building. And at that time, that program, it's, it's like it's written in there, but it's not, it's not cut out of the district. It was still written in there, but it's not operational. So I'm curious if that's something that could come back, you know? Because I remember at Travis, they had carpentry, they had mechanics at Eastside and, and, you know, so a lot of those jobs. But the other piece that I learned when my grandkids were in high school was that the internships, yeah, people want them, but they don't want to pay them. And so how do we get API to help us out with that? To get the businesses to invest in our youth? Because what happened was so many need, need income. So they end up leaving that internship because they needed to make some money so they, for their own selves. And so that's staying out till two in the morning, you know, the businesses really abuse our kids and make them stay out real late. So, so that's, that's something that really concerns me of how we can get people to have paid internships for our kids. And so you talked about ACC and the CTE, and they have coaches. So who, where do the coaches come from? Who are they?
There's an academic success team that works with Dr. Beagert with ACC High School Programs, also with Nissan Zuniga that oversees all of our high school programs, such as our CTE articulated courses, our dual-credit courses that we're working with. And so she has a team of success coaches that work alongside our campuses for any of our scholars that are enrolled in courses at ACC to really make sure that they're helping them to navigate that system with working with the professors, making sure that they have their textbooks, doing grade checks, and any type of interventions. If they're having difficulty with anxiety, test anxiety, any of the social emotional pieces, those academic success coaches are there to point them in the right direction and support them and make sure that they stay on track.
Excellent.
Yes, ma'am.
Because even adults need that, you know? And a capital idea of the Adult Job Training Program, they have a check-in with their counselor once a week just to check in. You know, "How's it going?" Just check out what's going on in their lives. And so that's, that's a very important piece and that would help them. Have day work, okay. I, I think, oh, that's, I think last year we talked about, do we follow our students after graduation? And you said, but I heard you earlier talking about that those numbers will be coming.
Those numbers will be coming when TEA releases the student listing for us. But yes, we continue to work with ACC. We have a summer melt initiative where after graduation happens, we continue to stay in contact with those scholars. We have college advisors that keep their doors open to make sure that any of those scholars that need to come back, that need that support, if they didn't make a decision before graduation and they need to come back and take a look at their career interest survey, if they need to take a look at their financial aid or their college essay or any of the plans that they had to revisit, their doors are always open. So we have a team of folks, college advisors, on every high school campus to make sure that we have our doors open for any of our graduates to come back and work with us.
Excellent.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Lou?
So thank you all for the information. So I'll start with the kind of revisiting what y'all mentioned, you know, the counseling aspect, the work that is being led by Twyla and Dr. Ross to ensure, you know, that students understand, you know, kind of, or that scholars understand what their options are and ultimately make the, an informed decision. And I'm kind of wondering too, to what extent is any of the work, and if, if the answer is nothing yet, that's okay. Just putting it out there as a question. So to what extent has the work around CCMR also been informed by the work from the Equity Office? So we can really think through, you know, yes, there might be some obvious equity gaps or disparities that we, that the district wants to address, but there's always something that we might miss, right? And so is any of that work being informed at intersection?
So we did start some of that work with the Equity Office, starting with the, the choice application because we recognized that that in itself was a barrier. Simply, you know, we had multiple applications across multiple campuses with a variety of expectations. So we did start that work about, I want to say the first year we got here with the Equity Office. And so I know Dr. Williams isn't with us anymore, but between her and Ms. Bailey, doing focus groups, having conversations with teachers and families. And so consequently, even as I said with Ann Richards, like Dr. Fanna just mentioned, pushing in to communities to help with some of this stuff because even with the application and everything else existing there, families need for you to actually sit down with them and help them work through like the entry-level barriers. But of course, there's other barriers, I'm sure that exist, that we still need to try to troubleshoot and figure out. But we started there and we did start that work with the Equity Office. Bless you.
And we did, we met last week with them to talk about some of those issues. And actually this morning, Katie Cat Stevens held a meeting, a kickoff meeting steering committee for us to really get involved in what this is going to look like and making sure that we are meeting and rising to the challenges that we've seen and heard about from our community as well.
Yay! That's great. I love that. And then, so I'm also wondering, you know, things that are being done now for the future, but maybe, you know, that this isn't necessarily a gap. How are students being, how are scholars being informed of, you know, hey, I may have an interest in such and such career certification, right? But the workforce need isn't there? Or the salary, like the living wage, you know, especially if a scholar wants to stay in Austin? It's like, you know, yeah, exactly. Yeah. And I also think back about in the community that I grew up, it was, you know, some of the, some of the options that were more prevalent were, you know, like fix, know how to fix an air conditioner, right? Know how to fix a, an engine. And then eventually it was, you know, learn how to, how to fix computers. And so, which is great, right? But again, looking at, you know, what's the workforce need in a particular city? Do students, do scholars understand, you know, we're all interested in something. Doesn't mean we're going to get paid for it, right?
That's part of that advisement piece that we talked about earlier. The state has did a really good job of rolling out programs of studies and they have different options on there. So if you're in arts and AV, there may be like, hey, this is not good in Austin, but it's good in Dallas. So a lot of mapping done. but it's good in Dallas. So, a lot of mapping done with that program study. So, part of the advisement piece is we work real close with the council and office, give them updates so they can advise the students.
Ms. Caesar also uses the workforce data to kind of drive a lot of that work, because we've had that conversation. It's not about putting a student on a dead-end path, especially when it's like, we know the data exists telling us that, hey, there's, there's actually not going to be that many jobs here, and they're not going to pay you very much either. And so, letting that kind of drive what we do, what we notice is that we actually, we actually give a lot of, get, students earn a lot of IBCs, but, you know, a lot of them don't count. So, it's like, we still are having to internally make the shift with teachers and systems to guide them towards, okay, I know we, we've given that certification for years and years and years, but it may not be as relevant anymore. So...
All right. That's what I wanted to hear. Yeah. Because it's like, yes, you know, some, you know, counseling, but yes to that. It's like, absolutely, right? You know, employment opportunities change, the workforce need changes. And, you know, I think about, you know, again, people that I've known, they, they thought, you know what, I'm going to be a cosmetologist, or, you know, I'm going to learn how to do nails. You cannot live in Austin with just one job like that. I mean, you're going to have to have some roommates or something. So, I, thank you for mentioning that, you know, going forward, really thinking about how to make some updates and use information that's available. Let's see. Oh, the other thing I noticed was on the attachment labeled CCMR 2022 final V2? What's this thing called? 2021 Annual Graduates Year-to-Year Comparison. So, I was looking at that and noticed that GPA Navarro, Crockett, and Anderson all had what appears to be double-digit changes in the, in the direction that we don't want those changes to be. And so, I'm wondering, you know, and you don't have to call out a specific campus, but just, you know, what are some early learnings about, you know, hey, what happened, you know, what, what can be improved, how much of it was just an anomaly, how much of it might be a systemic thing, or, you know, those, those kinds of early learnings?
And I think a lot of this, you know, especially with the 2020 graduates coming out of the pandemic, we weren't testing as much because of the pandemic. We weren't allowed to be able to host all of those scholars in the computer labs to be able to do that. So, we saw that drastic change. But, just making sure that we're continuing to work to, work on the multiple measures. One thing that we're doing is we have an opportunity to meet with Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board to talk about multiple measures, because those are the areas where we need to see what other things can we do to make sure that our graduates have an opportunity to enroll into college or enroll into a program in the workforce that they want to participate in. And so, that was some of the bottleneck there, was that we weren't actually able to offer exam as much as we could. And so, we'll definitely be doing that and meeting with them next Friday.
That's helpful to know. The other, two more things. One was around student sharing, and I'm just kind of curious, how is that being measured for, you know, so, I, I think of student sharing, and I think, okay, on the one hand, that's really great, right? We find an opportunity that a student can access, and we, we make that possible. Another part of me, you know, thinks, I wonder what it might feel like to be that student that is shared with another campus, because you really can't take the social emotional out of the learning, right? And so, back to my question, you know, like, is that being measured? You know, like, what does effective mean? Is it just from an academic-only lens, or is it like, hey, y'all, you know, good things are happening, maybe are trending up with academics, but, you know, our students are also struggling because it's, you know, they have to leave their campus, or just differences in, in campus norms?
And it's a difficult choice for them, because they want to be amongst their friends. They want to feel that belongingness. And so, if you're only going to another campus for one period a day, you're only getting an opportunity to be embedded into that one classroom. And so, not knowing, you know, a majority of the kids there on that campus. So, making sure that they feel comfortable going on those campuses with the administration, with those teachers, feeling welcome to be there. With student sharing is also something, like you talked about with the social emotional learning pieces. That's important for them to feel the belonging piece as well. But, I do believe that a lot of the scholars with the transportation, getting on the bus, taking that drive over to a different campus can be daunting on them as well, but making sure that we're putting some things in place so that they can utilize that time and to make sure that it's valuable for them. So, I know one thing that we talked about was making sure that all of our kids had their devices and had access to internet, to make sure that during that time, if they wanted to study, if they needed to get online, they had that travel time to be able to do so. And keeping them engaged is really important.
So, quick anecdote. So, you know, if they're anything like me, I always aspire to do work during business travel, and then I'm like, you know what, I never get to have a drink on a plane, so I'm going to have a drink. But, they are probably way more responsible than I am. So, so, but, but no, seriously, the, like, how, how is student sharing being measured, you know? And if it's not currently being measured, I, you know, understand, but how, how might it?
It's not being measured. I think that, like you said, anecdotally, we can interact with students that, you know, are engaged in student sharing, and you can see those students that, once they get to the campus and get in that classroom environment, you know, they get pretty accepted and they develop that cohort. But, you also have challenges with, you know, and going from one campus to the next, schedules not matching up, or transportation not showing up, or transportation being late and you miss. So, there's, there's those issues that we've observed anecdotally that we do have to be responsive to. But, in terms of just a metric or a survey or, we don't have that, but we have seen some of the challenges that exist for students that are participating.
Yeah. I think, so, thank you again. And I think that might be something of, of interest, right? Like, just add on to the stuff y'all are already doing. No, I know, I know it is a lot of work, but it might be something that, you know, not too far into the future, would be worth kind of putting a structure around to figure out, okay, what do we want to measure? How do we define success, you know? And then, whatever those improvements might be, how do you sequence them and prioritize them? Because none of this stuff will be solved overnight. Like, that's, that'd be a miracle. And then, my last thing is really more so a comment. So, so the Future Readiness Initiative, y'all, I was so excited to hear y'all say that about going to elementary schools. I'm like, yes, thank you. And thank you to trustee Anderson for always advocating for that. And I would definitely love to hear more as that initiative progresses. You know, again, same thing, right? Lessons learned, ooh, we tried this, didn't quite work. We tried this, and it, you know, we knocked it out of the park. And then, the other thing would be, you know, to the extent that the board as a body, or any, any of us, might be able to be concretely supportive, you know, I'd be happy to learn and figure out how I can support.
Thank you. Trustees, other questions? Trustee Singh, and then trustee Foster.
Thank you all so much. This is probably one of the most advanced conversations, I think, that we've had on college career. And I think, I, I'm so excited because I think our focus on attainment versus readiness, which we did before, has really elevated our conversation. You know, how our panel had talked about, you know, we want to make sure our students are successful after they leave AISD, so thanks for that. So, it's really cool to kind of see, like, I'm looking at page one of the board monitoring report. We actually have, it's very different, it's a very different pattern, I think, from what we saw with the STAR scores in some ways. Like, we've actually done better through the pandemic and over time on some of these goal progress monitoring items, like the TSI score pass rates have increased through the pan, like, from before the pandemic to after. The number of students taking college hours has increased, et cetera. So, I'm kind of curious to know, like, what do you think is causing that?
I think it's the intentional efforts that the entire team has put together, the systematic approaches that we're putting together. We're having more meetings together instead of working in silos. We're looking at the data. We have SWOT analysis that we do together to take a look at the data. We're training our teachers and training our APs and our principals on what this CCMR data looks like and how it's impacted on their campuses, asking them to support us with the buy-in, to make sure that they're aware of where we are and where we're trying to go. So, it's the intentional efforts of creating that systematic approach together and not working separately that I think is making the difference.
I really appreciate that. And I would be really curious, as Dr. Severance, you were talking about doing a deep, deeper dive on some of this data to see like, okay, where did we see the outliers in this? Because I was kind of interested, looking at that campus-by-campus information as well. And so, like, I'm trying to find it, because when you look at overall, we're doing better, but then you see a lot of variation between campuses. I suspect it has to do something with staffing. But, I would be really curious, like, once you have done that analysis, is that something that could be shared with the trustees?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because, and, and I ask that because I'm always thinking towards like the budget approval next June, because like, when, if we can identify the things that are actually creating the biggest changes, then we know that that's what we need to invest money in. So, if it's staffing, then, you know, that, if it's something else, then that's the thing. So, that's kind of where I'm going with that question.
I think some of the help will come from the work that we're doing with E3 too, in terms of just evaluating the program and being able to, like you said, glean, okay, what's really working and what's really helping us be successful, and what are, you know, some of the hurdles and barriers that we have, so...
That's great. Thank you. And so, I did appreciate trustee Lugo's question about the AP and IB, like, the, the student sharing. I'm, I think I recall when we were talking about the equity assessment, that we would be doing like a curriculum audit, but did I just kind of, did I just make that up, or is that true? I know I remember suggesting that, but do y'all know if that's going to be part of it?
Dr. Holly isn't with us this evening, but I know that we've had ongoing conversations about looking at our curriculum. And even despite the audit, you know, I don't know if anybody from academic, academic team wants to share, but I know that they're having those conversations ongoing about culturally proficient and culturally relevant curriculum. So, that's despite the audit, but...
Okay. Because I was kind of curious to know, like, I would, I imagine it would not be too difficult to get just a list of our high schools and just see like, okay, these are the campuses that are offering AP Biology, you know, like, how many AP Science classes are they offering? How many, whatever? Because when you, when I look at the data, like, for, let's see, the disaggregated data for AP completion, it varies quite a bit between racial groups of students. And so, for example, our economically disadvantaged African-American students are taking AP classes at about, I thought I saw, it was like about half the rate of the, of our white economically disadvantaged students. And so, like, but just seeing that number, like, I don't really know what that means. It's not necessarily, you know, like, so I'm wondering, is it because African-American students don't have as much access to AP and IB courses? Or is it that somehow they're not interested in taking those courses? Is it because they haven't passed the TSI or any sort of prerequisites that we've set forth? So, that's, that's, I'm sure you guys are looking at that as well. And I think I would really be curious to have maybe a follow-up discussion to learn a little bit more on what that is. But, do you have any kind of early thoughts on?
Well, one thing I will share, similar to what trustee Ashley was talking about, is that we have also seen that there are so many offerings. So, sometimes the AP offerings, the campuses that have higher percentages of students experiencing poverty, don't have as many AP course offerings, but they have more dual-credit or more early college high school offerings. And so, sometimes it's a, well, they're not taking as many AP courses, but if you'll notice, then the, the number of college hours did go up. So, if the AP enrollment dropped, but the number of college hours increased, there's, there are students taking advanced course options. And so, sometimes I think it's also about how do we make sure we're not, we don't want to compete amongst each other. It is about what's best for the student individually. So, is the best fit for the student a dual-credit course, an OnRamps course, an AP course? It does need to, it's all those pieces together, the advising, the best fit, and then also the, the access piece. It is an issue, so I'm not trying to say that it's not an issue. That is something that we are looking at as we work towards that universal choice sheet. How do we help ensure, and the course guide that Dr. Diaz with Academics is starting, like the revamping of that, to ensure that families are getting all the course options and the availability, so that we can kind of work towards having that, having families make choices. And then, we also know that just because they have the information, we still need to follow up and make sure that we, just like teaching, just because we tell students something doesn't mean they've actually learned it. So, just because we share information doesn't mean it is internalized or processed. So, we also have to do those follow-up. We have to go out to the community to make sure they're understanding the differences between, what's the difference between an AP and an OnRamps course? Because that's...
I mean, maybe we, don't get mad at me, y'all, but maybe we need to kind of look at, because, because in my mind, I think about AP and, and like OnRamps as being sort of on par with each other and IB, like, and I don't know if that's what you guys feel as well, but if they have similar rigor...
They, they do have similar rigor, and then sometimes it also depends on what the student's ultimate goal is. So, if they're going to go out of state to a private school, the AP might be a better choice than if they're going to stay in-state, then UT credit from OnRamps might be a better fit. So, again, it does go back. Sometimes also, there are so many choices and paths, but we want to make sure students have as many options as possible. All of the options are still good, and they can still fit whichever path they choose.
And starting early with the vertical alignment piece as well is important. So, making sure that our middle schools have a succinct vertical alignment to those offerings that are happening at the high school, making sure those honors-level classes are there, that we're wrapping around them with the services that we have from our partners, such as a UT prep, or Uteach, or the things that Breakthrough is doing, embedding it in those programs that we already have with our after-school programs, so that they're getting hands-on what they're hearing about. If you take some advanced-level options, look what this will lead to as well. So, I think it's going to take all of us kind of coming together to be able to offer it early. I just keep saying that about the awareness piece. It's so important.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I'm almost wondering if we should have made that goal progress monitor be AP, IB, or OnRamps.
So, I think that the analysis piece that you're looking for is, is taking place. I think we do see some issues of equity where we see where OnRamps is used and where it's not. And so, like she just talked about, the SSIG, that work is taking place to try to make sure that we have parity in terms of where it's being used across our district, you know? And so, those, even without you making a score quarter measure, we're, we're working on it.
Okay, that's cool.
And we are thinking about OnRamps in that sort of, like, should that be comparable in the AP, IB goal as well?
Okay, thank you.
And we added the course at LBJ.
Yep.
Okay. Now, the next question I have is kind of like, I've always wondered about this. I remember a few, when I first came on the board and was looking at some of this data, what I noticed was our Afri, and this is not to like generalize whole groups of students, it's just interpreting numbers. But, what I noticed is we seem to have, looking at African-American students and Hispanic students, it seemed like we had more African-American students who, if they passed the TSI, they would eventually go to college. The problem, though, is that we hardly had, we didn't have that many African-American students who were academically prepared. And so, they, the TSI pass rates were fairly low. But, then, when you look at Hispanic students, they scored, they seemed to pass the TSI at higher levels, but they were going to college at much lower rates, which made me think like, okay, there, maybe there's something else, like, maybe it's cultural, maybe it's financial, maybe it's something else. So, sort of like detective work, I'm kind of wondering, is that something that you all have been looking at? And do you see that, like, that interpretation that I had a couple of years ago, is that something that you guys are still seeing now, or where's our learning on this?
So, we do conduct a senior survey every year to take a look at what are those post-secondary options that our scholars are planning on taking. And then, of course, we couple that with our summer mail initiative that we do with the chamber, to really make sure that if you pass the TSI and you've already done your financial aid, if you've already done your application and got accepted, what is that barrier that is keeping you from enrolling? And we found that it was, it was numerous things, such as, I don't have a ride to orientation. I don't have the, the funding to pay the fee for whatever was coming up. So, making sure that we're tackling those barriers so that it doesn't keep them from actually enrolling into whatever program that it is. We also held a CTE signing day earlier in April for any of our scholars that were choosing... to go into the workforce. And what we found was that we wanted to engage more of our partners that were working with our CTE scholars to offer those positions early on. And so many of them didn't find out about those opportunities that, oh, I'm eligible for hire until later on. And so we had the signing day to really celebrate that and to show, like, you already have a job that is going to take you here with this organization that you've been working with and doing your internship with. That's a really great thing. But how do we make sure that we open that up to everyone earlier, so that they know that that's a viable option as well?
Yeah, I really, yeah, like, we're feeling that over here.
We will make sure you get an invitation.
Like, I mean, and I think, I know, and I imagine other folks might agree, but like, I just want to make sure that every kid who passes the TSI does something post-secondary, whether it's an industry certification, you know, college, whatever, the associate's degree, something. You know, I'm sure it breaks your hearts, too, when you see like, oh, my gosh, there's this chunk of kids that passed the TSI, but they didn't get it, they didn't earn anything beyond a high school diploma, which is like a missed opportunity. So I think that's where that counseling piece, the, you know, case management approach, that kind of stuff, I'm really excited to hear that you guys are really delving into that and look forward to hearing more. I think I have other questions, but that's it for now. I'll save it for a coffee or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Foster. Okay, thank you very much. Trustees, any other questions? The one request I would have is the, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Trustee Boswell has a question.
Oh, good, I'm lurking on the monitor.
No, I can see you, I can see you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're on mute. You somehow got on mute.
What's that?
You're good, you're good. We couldn't hear you partly, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah, Dr. Phan and Dr. Severance and Ms. Caesar, thank you all for this, I really appreciate it. I want to go back and celebrate something on Slide 5, on the monitoring report, that shows that even though we have a lot of work to do in this area in alignment with our own community's goals and the goals we've set as a district, that we are doing much better than the state on a lot of these measures. And I think, you know, on this measure overall, for our students with economic disadvantage, and I think that's really something to mark and celebrate, and I think a real statement about our values as a community, that we do want that success for all of our students after high school, whatever that measure looks like. So I really want to make sure we're celebrating that and making note of that. And that our investment really is paying off in a lot of ways, even though we have more work to be done. I also really want to share appreciation for information for families and students, and information for families early, really understanding, helping people understand, these are very nuanced, nuanced options with a lot of pros and cons, and just looking at Onramps versus early college high school versus AP versus IB, they each have pros and cons. As Dr. Severance, you were explaining, depending on what you think you want your path to be after high school, and it's very hard to know that for a lot of families, but I think the more information families have, the better. And I also really appreciate a mention in some of your slides about what your plan is going forward, of really taking our graduates and seeing them as the ambassadors that they are. We have graduates out in the world who have taken each of these paths, who are earning good work in construction in Austin, who are, you know, have graduated early because of AP tests or because of early college high school. We have so many good, strong paths that we can share, so thank you for that. And I would look forward to learning a little bit more about how we're identifying students to be ambassadors and how we're deploying those students to be our ambassador. If you have anything to share about that right now, I would love to hear it. And if not, I would love to hear later what that might look like and how that's working.
So for our ambassadors that are sharing this work, we've been actually working with Communications Department to find a lot of those graduates that are doing some of this great work that you're talking about, and creating videos within CTE, within early college programs, within advanced academics, so that we can showcase that and show what they're doing, doing some interviews with those scholars as well, and utilizing that as a way so that they can make sure that we're sharing it with our current scholars, showing them that, hey, this student just graduated from the same high school that you attend right now, and they're doing really great things right out of high school, or even in the next two to three years, showing them what that looks like. And then also bringing in our partners, who possibly even graduated from an Austin ISD high school, and making sure that they're sharing their story with them as well.
Fantastic, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you for sharing that. And I hope that students will go in person as well, and I think parent-to-parent, family-to-family, and student-to-student all has power. And I think hearing those stories of, I was here and here's my path, is very helpful. So thank you for that, I'm very excited about that. And then I would love to know, as we go budgeting, I would love to have, you know, a conversation, not in this board meeting, but just separately, to have a better handle on what our college advising looks like right now, and how we might budget better to make sure we're supporting that. I really value that we're offering and honoring a lot of different paths. The college isn't the only successful path, but I also know that our data shows that we have large percentages of students, especially our students who are Hispanic, African-American, or have economic disadvantage, who say they want to go to college and plan to go to college, and there's a double-digit gap between the number who say they plan to and the number who actually do. And I think advising is obviously a big piece of that, to find, you know, increasingly there are colleges that are offering very affordable tuition or no tuition for families who have low incomes. There are more and more options for our students out there if they get the advice. You know, people, a lot of assumptions about sticker price and who college is for and who it isn't. And I want to be sure, as Trustee Singh said, that we're really looking at what's offered where. And I know we can't offer everything at every campus, but being really thoughtful about making sure people have access, but also making sure people have that information about if that is the path you do want to choose, how do you make that path realistic? How do you do that? And that that's not a conversation senior and high school before that. So I would love to learn more about what our college advising looks like and what might be needed in our budget process to make sure it's as strong as it can be for our students.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sapata, do you have an additional question?
I just want to clarify, I think I said, I talked about paid internships, but I didn't ask the question, are we getting internships for students that are, the partner is paying them?
Paid internships, any in CTE?
We have mostly unpaid.
Then CTE, for our practical pieces where they go out and do their internships, those are unpaid, but we do engage with the youth program that we did this summer that was paid. And so we're going to continue on with that to make sure that they have those opportunities for paid internships. But the CTE internships are unpaid.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm very interested, because when we, I was working with the health, students who wanted to be nurses, and they were getting certification at our campus and not getting paid at the nursing homes where they were doing their internship. But in conversations with central health to open that for payment for our students, because, again, a student was going to leave because she really needed to help her mom with the bills, and so we were able to be able to keep a student in their dream job. So it's important that we really, and that's my love, is to really get, you know, our business community to invest in our youth, because we have amazing students that can do really good work. So, and yes, thank you, you were very helpful in helping get summer youth in our schools, and that's something that's still in conversation. We did get Travis County and the city to raise the wage for our students from $7.25 to $13. So it's an opportunity that we can, again, work together and get as many of our students to work during the school year with those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sapata. I would just add, in addition to, I think, summer youth employment funds, which are provided by the US Department of Labor to local governments, we also have a growing industry of apprenticeships in different arenas, whether it's already in construction, whether it's in healthcare, manufacturing, technology. I think one of the things that I might ask you all is, as you look through the gaps of our workforce plan that we have here for our region, and if you are looking for certain categories of industries that you might be able to leverage, the trustees and the relationships they have, whether it's in the construction area, whether it's in healthcare, in technology, in manufacturing, those areas that are both high-demand and high-paying jobs that allow our communities to continue to afford to live here, we'd be happy to be of help with that, as you continue to see the gaps and the assessments in our community. Because I think as we move more towards apprenticeships and industry, that's, the industry wants to pay, and we have the students, and we ought to be able to be a matchmaker to that as we continue to grow the CCM outcomes and goals. So thank you all very much. And trustees, just one more, any other questions? And if not, I just want to thank the trustees, Dr. Mays, and all of you all for your great presentation and discussion. As part of our commitment to monitoring, the last question is to ask if trustees accept the report presented as it aligns with our goals and constraints, and if not, to ask if this is still the right strategy for the district. So trustees, please raise your right hand if you're ready to accept tonight's report. So thank you all very much for taking part in this shared commitment to students and student outcomes. Thank you all so much. Before, let's see here, I got it right. So before we move to public comment, which is next, we want to make the community aware that, starting with our next meeting, we are looking at switching the scorecard report and the public comment item to help in-person public comment providers with having a better estimate of what time the item will start. So we appreciate the community's feedback as we continue to change the way we do our public comment area, and we welcome any ideas and feedbacks on the meetings by emailing us at trustees@austinisd, and/or also emailing dr. Jacob Reach, our Chief of Board Services, at jacob.reach@austinisd.org. We're now going to move to the public testimony for items on the consent agenda, on the agenda, I should say. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called the dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. Tonight, we have 24 people signed up to speak in person, and we have 21 who left a recorded message. We will begin with in-person testimony, and in order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come up to the microphone when their name is called, and we will call three names at a time. As you come to the microphone, there's a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time, and when the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise, that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name, and we ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, to please show respect for each other at all times. So tonight's speakers in person are, the first three are Joe Copper, Josh Bowser, Max Pierce.
Just for the record, it's Cooper.
Cooper. Ah, they have it misspelled here.
No worries.
And you can start whenever you'd like, the clock will start.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Joe Cooper, I'm the community member here, I attended Linder, Fullmore, and Travis. I currently work as the Training Director for the Plumbers and Pipefitters Local 286 here in Austin. Wanted to commend the resolution the board is considering, this, the 15% local hire goal that can be achieved by graduates from a Department of Labor apprenticeship program or a bilingual craft training program or ACC, that complements the Davis-Bacon Act. The contractors that perform this work while using this to this resolution and using these apprentices helps us train our next generation of skilled workers and feeds into these apprenticeship programs. So the, these mentors train that next set of folks. I just wanted to thank you, Ms. President, and the board for considering this.
Hi, my name's Josh Bowser, and I'm a journeyman electrician, and I'm also an organizer with IBW 520 here in Austin. As an organizer, it's my job to speak with construction workers on a daily basis. And the first question I always ask construction workers when going on to a new job is, what's most important to you? And the answers are always the same. First and foremost, construction workers are concerned with safety conditions on the job. And being a construction worker is a dangerous job, and Better Builder standards help assure safer working conditions on these jobs. So the fact that OSHA 10 requirements and Department of Labor accredited training lead directly to safer jobs. So I feel like it's our responsibility to adopt better buildings, better builder standards to help protect these construction workers that are building our schools.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Max Pierce, I am the state organizer with Texas Climate Jobs Action, and we're here today with some of our coalition partners to talk about this important resolution y'all are considering. Y'all have wanted to do a lot of great work for the district, I think, in this upcoming years, really, what you're proposing as far as fixing some facilities and doing some really important work, that are going to do a lot to help as far as reducing carbon emissions and really making schools better for teachers and students. But one thing that's not happening right yet is we don't have the labor standards that are going to make sure our workers are doing this in the safest way possible. There's a number of things that are brought up in this resolution that are absolutely crucial and needed in this, in the state. You know, OSHA training is a huge one, we want to make sure nobody's getting hurt on the work site. Independent monitors are also really huge. The truth is, if you don't have people there making sure the rules are being followed, these abuses still happen in the workplace, and exploitation continues to happen. So please consider supporting Resolution 10.1. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Ben Brenneman, Abigail Leighton, and Toga Pendrake.
I thank you, and I urge you to support Item 10.1. You know, we've, my name is Ben Brenneman, I'm the Business Manager for the International Brothers of Electrical Workers Local 520, especially the independent monitoring provisions of this. We've seen what happens when low-road contractors put workers at risk. If you've ever seen the results of a high-voltage electrical explosion, it's not pretty. And independent monitoring, you know, rules are only as good as your ability to enforce them, and we've seen what happens when the rules are not enforced. This resolution is going to make sure that dangerous employers don't have a competitive advantage when bidding jobs supported by AISD taxpayers. So I thank you, and I urge your support for this resolution.
Hello, good evening, my name is Abigail Leighton, I'm an organizer with IBW Local 520, and I also would love to urge you guys to just please consider this item. On December 10th, 2021, Hector Forges was, age 40, was fatally struck by a falling pipe. Jorge Mendoza Ramirez, age 21, was electrocuted by a faulty drop light. That was April 9th, 2022. These are just two workplace fatalities that have taken place within the last year in Austin, Texas, on construction sites. Most of them didn't even have names listed in the OSHA fatality inspection database. They've merely been referred to as worker, and in all but three instances. If the Better Builder Program stipulation of mandatory OSHA 10 training and OSHA 30 training is going to save even one Hector or one Jorge, I think that it's going to be very important, we can't let it pass us by. Please consider it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Howdy, howdy, Toga Pendrake, IBW Local 520, and I'm here in support of this action, specifically because I was injured on the job site. Something as simple as independent onsite monitoring could have had somebody ask, hey, do you have a journeyman? onsite monitoring could have had somebody ask, hey, do you have a journeyman's license? Hey, is there a journeyman on this team in this building? And that would have stopped my accident where I was set on fire. I was in the hospital. I was out of work for three, three months. And another part of that is workers' comp was vital to me being able to survive because my health insurance hadn't kicked in. I, you know, still needed food. I still needed to pay rent. I still needed to pay my phone, even when I couldn't chew my own food. So, these work standards matter. They save lives. They affect people like me.
Thank you. Christopher Moncevias, Henry Ramsey Bissex, Thomas Kennedy.
My name is Christopher Moncevias, a apprentice with IBW Local 520, also a community member of Austin ISD, providing a public statement on Agenda Item 10.1, Board Resolution to Expand Worker Protections. This Board Resolution will-
Mike, please.
This Board Resolution will require Austin ISD to a certain living wage for all workers under contract. As some of you may recall-
Was it, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry about that. My name is Christopher Moncevias. I'm an apprentice with the IBW Local 520. I'm providing a public comment on the Agenda Item 10.1, Board Resolution to Expand Worker Protections. This Board Resolution will require Austin ISD to ensure a living wage for all workers under contract. As some of you may recall, many years ago, Austin ISD adopted the prevailing wage under Davis Bacon Act. This was a great first step and helped us to achieve a living wage for many of our construction workers. However, these prevailing wages do not set a living wage for every worker under the classification. Truth is simple. Every worker deserves a wage that allows them to support a family in our city. We can do that by extending Austin ISD's minimum wage to construction workers. I ask that this board votes to approve the resolution on worker protections to ensure Austin ISD is providing a living wage to all workers. Thank you.
Every three days, a construction worker dies in Texas. This stat is how I would start my canvassing spiel. For the past few weeks, I've been spending my weekends talking to the public about the issues that Texas workers face. This stat was met with shock, anger, and unsurprised disappointment. It was also met with, universally with a desire for change. Today, voting in support of this resolution will go a long way to ensure that AISD does not contribute to this stat. The union workers here today are eager to build the schools for Austin's children. They don't want to be worried about their safety each time they drive into work. I encourage you all to vote in support of this resolution. I'm Ramsey Bissex with Austin DSA. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Kennedy. I am a local member of the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters and a community member of Austin ISD. I applaud the board for considering this resolution. Part of this resolution will require all workers on a local ISD project to require OSHA 10. I am lucky enough to have gone through an apprenticeship program, which afforded me the OSHA 30 classification. And I'd like to point out that on a job site that I've worked on, on these, on these job sites, it's not the people that have the OSHA training that we have to worry about. It's the people that don't have the OSHA training. Those are the people that are going to injure my fellow brothers and myself when I'm on the job. Those are the people that are going to be installing these, these systems that could potentially injure and kill us. On the job, we have a saying, a safety saying, "Go home the same way you came to work." This, this resolution will help each one of my brothers do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ron Lord, Jeremy Hendricks, and then Stephanie Court.
Good evening. My name is Ron Lord. I'm a community and union member, represent Southwest Pipe Trades. Thank you very much for putting the 10.1 Agenda Item in the consent. I assume that means that everyone is supporting it. And so, with that, thank you very much. I appreciate your support for all these issues. Apprenticeship, and I want to mention the scorecard, and thank you, Mr. President, for, for raising apprenticeship. A lot of times, college is seen as the, the goal of education. This organization was formed for education, and including apprenticeship adds to that education. You get the benefit of the building itself, but you're adding to the career paths for people to build wealth, become a private business owner, a small business owner, or they could go into any other area. Thank you very much for your help. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jeremy Hendricks with the Laborers International Union, and I'm here to talk about 10.1, the Worker Protection Resolution. Our members are proud to build and service this community with good wages, benefits, and safe working conditions, but unfortunately, a lot of folks in this community don't have those same protections. And a worker who builds and retrofits our schools deserves to have a safe job site in what is the most dangerous state in America for workers, unfortunately. They also deserve fair wages in a state that has some of the lowest wages in America, and they deserve respect and real investments in our workforce that will result in better jobs, better working conditions, and in the end, better quality schools for our children. One of the Central Texas Building Trades and a long list of allies and community supporters are standing united here tonight to ask for your support of this important resolution. So, please vote yes, and thank you all for your service.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Corte with Texas Climate Jobs. I'm here to present to you all the signatures that we have collected on a petition in support of your resolution to expand worker protections. We have been knocking on doors all across Austin for about over a month now, and we've collected about 400 signatures of community members, and I have some packets here that I can share up with you all. But I draw your eyes to the many photos that we've been taking with folks at their doors who are supporting this resolution, along with our coalition members of the various unions that are here today. We want to make sure that residents of Austin, their voices are being heard, and they care about the workers at our schools. And so, these are their names. They have signed our petition, and I am here to represent them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Ken Zafaris, Sharon Vane, and Ben Sudaby. Sarah Fiss.
Thank you. My grandpa would be proud.
Yes. Practice makes perfect.
Good evening, Board. My name is Ken Zeraphis. I'm President of Education Austin. The corner you find yourself in is a district where you feel forced to hire uncertified teachers, has been created over the last two decades of disrespect and underpaying teachers to the extent that, in many ways, it is no longer the honored profession it once was thought to be. We have hit a tipping point where teachers will no longer tolerate the disrespect and unrealistic workload for the ridiculously low pay. We deserve respect. This crisis was created through negligence and disrespect. If you think this is just a product of the pandemic, you are sadly mistaken. This is almost two decades of reform movement carving away at public education and the teaching profession. It is time that we do everything possible to stand up for teachers and workers. We can't simultaneously raise standards for students, yet lower standards for teachers. It doesn't make sense. You don't get more with less. You only get less with less. Hiring less-qualified teachers is not the solution. Treating people with dignity and respect that they so richly deserve is. In addition, education is in full, Education Austin has been full support of 10.1 and the Better Builder standards that we all believe in. We also believe we should have high standards for what it means to be a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon, Sharon Vane Kay. Ben?
Good evening, Board members. My name is Ben Sudaby. I use he/him el pronouns. First, I need to mention that I'm not speaking representing my employer, my union, or any of the boards that I sit on. I am speaking as a community member, as a taxpayer, and as a tio. My nephew just started at McBee. Go, go bees. So, I really want to urge you to adopt 10.1, this resolution, and the standards there that are held in there, many similar to what the city and the county have for their construction sites. When you set these standards as a baseline, part of your, your procurement process, you put it out in the street, all these companies come to bid to be your prime contractor to do this work, it lets them know that they're not to cut corners. And I was raised that you do it right, and you do it right the first time, and you take care of people. And, and people who are not going to take care of their employees and the workers on, on the sites that they're working on are also not going to deal squarely with you as a board. So, it's part of your fiduciary duty to make sure these standards are held, and it lets people know that you're taking care of the workers, but also that, that you have standards for them and their dealings with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Casey Lonsan Gom, David Chin Kanchan, Joseph Hernandez.
Hello, Board members. My name is Casey Lonsan. I'm a union member and president of IBW 520 Local, right here in Austin. This Board Resolution, I support, and I urge you to support, and I thank you for your consent to support this. I want to talk about the 15% hiring local. We've already heard this, but put a little promotional spin on it. I made it through my apprenticeship by being on AISD projects, and it taught me invaluable lessons on, on how to be a good electrician, and I certainly appreciate that. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the monitoring. The whole time of my five-year apprenticeship, I ran into one monitor. I had a chance to discuss with that monitor, and he simply said that he didn't have enough time to hit all of the AISD projects. So, I urge you to support this, and I thank you for your consent to do so.
Good evening, trustees. My name is David Chin Kanchan. I am a proud AISD graduate, and I am the Policy Director for Workers' Defense. And I wanted to thank you for considering this resolution for worker protections, but I also wanted to thank the community and the coalition that formed that has worked so hard to bring this forward and to make this a reality. Many of our members are low-wage construction workers here in Austin, and many of our members are also parents, guardians, and family members of Austin ISD students. So, they understand the importance of the work that you're taking on, because they understand how essential it is to create learning environments where children, students can grow, can learn, and can thrive. But how we get there is just as important. And so, that is a huge responsibility that you have on your shoulders, but it's also a huge opportunity to live out the values that this district and this community holds, make sure that everyone in our community is being treated with dignity and respect. The construction workers who build these buildings, who build our schools, certainly deserve that. So, thank you very much. I hope you approve it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Big Joe Hernandez. I'm born and raised in Austin, Texas, in Dove Springs, stone's throw away from here. I was a problem child of J. Houston Elementary and Mendez Middle School. I'm also a recruiter, organizer for the Local 520 of IBW. I'm here to encourage 10.1 of this so that, let me tell you why. I recently got to visit Travis Early College and Navarro CT Program, specifically the electrical programs. I think it's imperative that, as a community and as a board, that we not just encourage them to learn this electrical program, but that we provide a place for them to use these skills. And what better than for them to use these skills on the schools that they have just graduated from? The pride that goes into that, the joy knowing that they built where they came from. That's what we're going to do together as a community with your support, and I thank you and encourage you to support this.
Thank you. That was awesome. Man, Joe, you had me so much in a tent, and I forgot where I am. I forgot where I am. You had me a problem child. Ryan Pollock, Tracy Dunlap, and Eileen Bassan.
My name is Ryan Pollock. I'm a union journeyman electrician. Thank you, Trustees Rodriguez, and, and seeing for introducing this, and thank you, Board, for considering this. What this resolution is about is accountability. We believe in our public school system because we believe in accountability, and, and we want to see these projects, the contractors on them, be held accountable and, and maintain the standards that we expect as Austinites. We want, this is a lot of money we're going to be spending. We want to see that, that investment spent well and with the maximum output that it can, and that means making sure that these workers are well-trained, go home safe, and are well-compensated, and help alleviate poverty. And, and also, we need well-trained workers, and if they're not, these contractors aren't being held accountable, we can't, we can't ensure that that's going to be happening. We're reaching a point where we're running out of enough workers to do all the, the work in the city that's coming up. We need to make sure we have that. Thank you.
My name is Tracy Dunlap. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Maplewood and a leader with Education Austin. Let me begin by saying that scheduling Parents Conference Night, the same night as an AISD board meeting, disenfranchises teachers and our ability to have a voice here. Secondly, Education Austin stands in solidarity with the workers who will build and retrofit our schools in asking for safe work sites and fair wages. Please pass the Worker Protection Resolution on the agenda tonight. I am gravely concerned about another issue, Item 16.1, regarding changes to the teacher certification requirement for elementary teachers. Removing this requirement de-professionalizes teaching and is frankly insulting to our profession. And why are we considering hiring uncertified teachers only for early childhood and elementary grades? This sends a message that what we do is somehow less than what is required at the secondary level. If you want to recruit and retain excellent teachers, here's a novel idea. Pay us a livable wage, give us reasonable class sizes and workloads, give us the supports we need without micromanaging us, and treat us with respect. Lowering the standards for our profession doesn't feel like respect.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eileen Bassan. I am a union organizer with United Here Local 23, the Hospitality Workers Union, and a community member of Austin ISD. I am providing public comment on Agenda Item 10.1, the Board Resolution to Expand Worker Protections, today because I support protecting construction workers, and I am the daughter of a Texan oil-rig worker with 20-plus years of experience. So, I know firsthand how stressful it is for a child to not know if their father's going to come home, or I vividly remember my father coming in with a swollen leg when I was in middle school and how confusing that is. Many incidents just this year alone, my father fell in a pit that was unmarked during his graveyard shift, and an untrained, none, no safety-training worker got in a fire with him this past August. So, although I work for Hospitality Workers and am part of that union, this is an issue that's very near to my heart, because I don't want anyone else to deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Amber Mills, Melinda Rowe, and Iana Kalmika.
Oh, God, I'm so short. Okay. Hi, my name is Amber Mills. I'm an organizer with Move Texas and a member of Move Texas United. I'm providing public comment in support of Agenda Item 10.1. Move Texas has advocated for policies like paid sick and for fair wages for election workers, because we know that young workers, especially young workers of color, deserve and need economic justice in order to do more than just barely survive, but to thrive in our community. Under the same thread, this Board Resolution will, will require Austin ISD to ensure a living wage for all workers under contract. As you all know, the cost of living in Austin continues to skyrocket. It is nearly impossible for young people to own a home or support a family if they're being paid less than $15 an hour. We must do better, because young work, or young workers in Austin are depending on it. I ask you to vote to approve the resolution on worker protections.
My name is Melinda Rowe, and I'll be providing public comment on Item 10.1. I'm an electrician out of IBW Local 520. 520 electricians build AISD buildings, so we have a vested interest in securing better, safer working conditions. safer working conditions, not only for our union brothers and sisters, but for construction workers in this city as a whole. The people that work so hard to build the places that you go to work in and that your children go to school in deserve to return home safely to their families each day and to be able to put food on the table for their families. So I ask that the board votes to approve the resolution on worker protections. Thanks.
My name is Yana Kalmika. I'm an AISD community member. I'm a Labor Outreach Coordinator with Texas Climate Jobs Action, and I am also the daughter of an immigrant construction worker. This is very near and dear to my heart for that reason. I guess for all those reasons, I urge you all to accept the worker protections here today, because if you're thinking about the safety and also the ability to pay attention of your public school students, there are probably many of them who have construction worker parents, and I cannot count the times that I had to, you know, skip out on an important day of school because my dad came home with a workplace injury, or the times that I couldn't focus in a classroom because I got a text from my mom about something that happened with my dad on a job. And those worker protections are really crucial and make all the difference between the times that you're worried about your family and the times that you know they're going to come home safe. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we had one speaker who was not here, Sharon Vane. Okay, so we are done with the in-person speakers, and thank you all for your time tonight. We will now play the recorded messages for public testimony, so trustees, please listen carefully.
Hello. Roxanne Evans, District 1 Advocate and longtime volunteer. President Rodriguez, interim Superintendent Mays, and Board members, I'm calling regarding Agenda Item 16.1. This will change the teacher's certification requirement. The teachers are not required to be certified or enrolled in an alternative certification program at the time they are hired, which is current policy. This change is included in the AISD District of Innovation renewal application, and it's troublesome and would be in effect for the next five years. I'm sensitive to the fact that AISD is facing teacher shortages, as are many districts in Texas. But changing the certification requirement does not solve the long-term issues of teacher recruitment and retention. Although I'm concerned about the qualification and certification status of all teachers in all schools, I'm deeply concerned about how this change would affect District 1 schools with a high teacher turnover rate. I strongly encourage the board to add language to require any teachers hired without an existing Texas or out-of-state teacher certification to be enrolled in an alternative education certification program.
This is regarding Item 16.1, page 8 of the DOI. Having people who aren't college or university educated serving as teachers isn't innovation, it's disaster. I have concern about the definition of reasonably possible. Who will oversee and verify that colleges of education have been contacted, that best feasible salaries have been offered, that safety of workplace has been ensured? Austin students, families, and communities deserve the best qualified teachers, not the cheapest allowable by law. Trustees, the future of Austin is at risk. We need you to advocate for education. Thank you. I'm calling as a teacher, a longtime Austin citizen, and someone who deeply cares about the children of Austin.
Hi, my name is Kamlyn Nowar. I have three children in AISD, two in an Eastside Elementary School, and one in the Eastside Middle School. And I had heard that an agenda item tonight is to be discussed is the teachers not having to be certified to be in the classrooms, and while I know we have a major teacher shortage, this just does not seem like the right choice in filling the teacher spots for a number of reasons. It's a big part of why we go to AISD is knowing the training that these teachers have been through, and that would not stand any longer. In addition, I can't imagine what it would feel like to the trained teachers to all of a sudden have people come in who have no training and not even enrolled in a training program, is what I read in the information. And already, at this point, when the teachers already feel sort of demoralized and like they're not treated professionally and like professionals, I think that this would be a huge detriment to that cause. So I don't know what the answer is, but this does not feel like it could possibly be the answer on how to get more teachers into the classroom so that our children are still getting high quality.
Good evening. My name is Candace Hunter. I'm a parent in the district. I'm calling about Item 16.1, District of Innovation Approval. As an owner of an educator professional development firm and a field supervisor of a teacher certification program, I understand the importance of having well-trained teachers in our classrooms. I also understand demand currently outweighs supply, but hiring individuals who are not certified and who are not already enrolled in an educator certification program is akin to pulling in people off the streets to teach our children. In the short term, I would ask that the board ensure that all teachers hired for Austin ISD are certified or are enrolled in a teacher certification program already. Perhaps there can be a financial incentive for these teachers. In the midterm, I ask that the board and district seek out partnerships with schools that have models like those at UTEP, Tech, and U of H Downtown, and others to leverage teacher interns and apprentices, which can also be used as substitutes. In the long term, I ask that we expand our Grow Your Own program beyond Aiken and Navarro. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Letty Ostega, and I am a member of the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades and partner of Texas Climate Jobs Action. I am calling to make a comment on Agenda Item 10.1. I'm calling to ask the Austin ISD School Board to take a stance against exploitation on job sites by adopting a resolution to expand workers' protections. A livable wage, adequate social training, compliance monitoring, and access to workers' comp and healthcare are basic human rights. I urge you to be an exemplary model for others across Texas to follow. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Christian Phobody. As a former educator and current environmental activist, I'd like to address Agenda Item 10.1 on the Worker Protections Resolution. Ensuring that school infrastructure improvements are done well is an investment with immense ramifications for the future of not only AISD, but the fabric of civic life in Austin. As Texas summers get even more severe and maintenance costs for aging infrastructure rise, it is vital that the improvements from the potential bond in November are done well. And one of the best ways to do this is by ensuring that the workers doing these improvements are treated well. This can have, this will have untold positive ripple effects into the future, and it will help to build more trust in public institutions and lock in long-term savings so that AISD can retain educational resources and the teachers to meet the rising demands of living in a boom city. Awarding contractors with poor worker protections would do the opposite. It would lock in potentially major maintenance costs down the road that would jeopardize not only future budgets, but the health and safety of AISD students. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Fletus. I'm calling about Agenda Item 7.1. The outcomes data presented tonight for students receiving special education is grim. Thirty-eight out of 440 graduates met this threshold. I would respectfully ask that this administration coordinate and collaborate with the Special Education Department, especially those well-versed in transition, so this district can never fulfill its aspiration to ensure all kids are college, career, or life-ready. TTE programs must be accessible to all beyond Clifton and Rosedale. I think we can all agree that data calls for a more targeted plan to ensure shared responsibility for this population across administrative teams, as well as the preparation of a plan to improve outcomes for this population, which was not included in this presentation. With a staggering number of Texans with disabilities being unemployed, it's imperative AISD do better to ensure our graduates with disabilities have equal access to achieving their post-secondary goals. I respectfully ask that trustees ensure action is taken with this administration to formulate a plan for improvement that coordinates transition services and CCMR outcomes. Thank you.
This is Ann Boone. I have three children in AISD. This is in regards to Agenda Item 16.1. I absolutely oppose that any teacher that is hired into AISD would not have a certification. Any teacher that is hired in or out of state must have a teacher certification or at least be enrolled in an alternative education certification program. I'm thoroughly discouraged in the board that this hasn't gone into the public prior to this decision that's being made. I think parents should be able to weigh in this. I chose AISD because of the certifications that our teachers hold and the standard at which they are held at, even the ones that are just currently enrolled in a certification program. Currently, our teachers are, in our schools, have PE every single day so that our teachers can develop cohorts in order to improve the education process for our students. And if they are put in a cohort with someone that does not have any teacher certification whatsoever, those teachers are now going to then be required to train those teachers that have no education of teaching prior to this. I think I am very much--
My name is Dan Nguyen. I'm a professor for one of ET Austin's teacher preparation programs. I'm calling about Agenda Item 16.1, whether to allow non-certified teachers to be hired to be Austin ISD teachers. I'm strongly against such a move. Teaching is a high-level skill. Like any skill, we should trust experts to do it. If you have a medical issue that requires surgery, you wouldn't hire a random person to put a Band-Aid on the problem. Masking the problem does nothing for the long term. Every attempt to mask the problems of the teacher shortage only prevents society from fixing the actual problem. And so I'm against allowing Agenda Item 16.1 to be passed. Thank you for your time.
Yes, hi, my name is Garrett Boone. I am an AISD parent of three kids that are at Maplewood Elementary. Was just calling in regards to Agenda Item 16.1 in reference to changing teacher certification. I'm just calling in this with my support of adding an amendment that will require any teachers hired without an existing Texas or out-of-state teacher certificate to be enrolled in an alternative education certification program. Thank you.
This is Nina Wilson. I've taught in AISD for 22 years, supported teachers' professional learning at the district level, and currently work with the newest of teachers, and I'm deeply concerned with Item 16.1. Solving a crisis by creating another crisis keeps us in a reactionary hamster wheel. It's harmful to our children to remove the requirement of having a trained educator who skillfully and with sound pedagogy teaches each child. It will change our children's lives. We will burn out the teachers whose pedagogy is sound as they carry the burden, whether officially or unofficially, supporting these warm bodies while maintaining the full weight of their own classrooms. Additional trauma will be experienced by our children as these warm bodies cause harm attempting to learn how to teach. We are in a tough position, and there are no easy solutions. That doesn't mean that we should do anything in the name of something. Our children deserve to have their full humanity values. They deserve a quality education and to have qualified educators. We need adaptive solutions from creative minds. Please reach out to EPPs to develop viable, mutually beneficial, and sustainable partnerships for the best outcomes for our teachers and children. They deserve that.
Hi, my name is Cindy St. John. I'm the mother of two AISD students, one at Lamar and one at Blanton. I would like to voice my concern over Item 16.1, which removes the certification requirements for elementary teachers. Our elementary teachers are experts in their field. I had a parent-teacher conference yesterday with my son's kindergarten teacher, and I am amazed at how knowledgeable she is about childhood development, and my son is thriving and learning so much from her. To remove the certification requirement sends a message that anyone can do the job, and it is that line of thinking that got us into this teacher shortage mess. When we value, respect, and support our teachers, both financially and by trusting them to make decisions in the classroom as the experts that they are, we will see people excited to join the profession again. That's the solution, not lowering the standards for our youngest learners.
This is Kathleen Hulehan. I am an Austin ISD parent, and I am calling to speak on Agenda Item 16.1 about teacher certification. I believe that AISD should continue to require teacher certification or alternative certification, and I also believe that AISD should have asked for more parent input on this process before making such a big change. So please continue to require teacher certification. Our children deserve certified teachers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Batshelder. I'm a parent at AISD, two children, and one in first, one in third. I am in support of requiring Texas teachers to have alternative education certification programs. This is Agenda Item 16.1. I'm also in support of facilitating retired teachers to come and teach by eliminating the retiree surcharge. Thank you for your time.
My name is Kelly Kirk. I am the proud school counselor at Maplewood Elementary School here in Austin ISD, and I am calling in support of an amendment that will require any teachers hired without an existing Texas or out-of-state teacher certification to be enrolled in an alternative education certification program. We cannot adopt a policy of hiring non-certified teachers. We must provide a quality public education experience for all of our students and uphold high standards. Thank you.
My name is Grace Chalk. I'm referring to Agenda Item 16.1. Of course, teachers need to be certified. Any profession involving the future, the future of children, the future of our country, they need to be certified. They need specific training, specific techniques, specific hours to put in, volunteer hours, all of their teacher training with different types of schools, elementary, middle school, high school, creating lesson plans, all the dynamic of working with students who are from low SDF communities. I didn't practice before I started, but this is ridiculous that it would even be an option for a teacher, an adult, to be in charge of a child, of their future, to not have any training, any certification. It is imperative that we help each other learn and grow, and teacher certifications are a must. I--
Hi, this is Matthew Love. I'm a Maplewood Elementary parent. I'm calling in regards to the teacher certification item that the board will consider tonight. I would like to state that it probably seems like a good idea to have those teachers that come in without certification to be enrolled at some point in some sort of program that helps them become certified. I think that would go a long way to ensuring that we also don't alienate some of the teachers that have worked hard for that certification. Again, Matthew Love, Maplewood parent, in regards to the certification issue that you all are dealing with. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Melissa Tester, and I am the parent of a middle school and elementary school student at AISD, and I am calling about Agenda Item 16.1. I am calling in support of, actually, I'm like to say that I am opposed to Agenda Item. I am calling in support for an amendment that will require any teachers hired without an existing Texas or an out-of-state teacher certification to be enrolled in an alternative education certification program. So I do not support the Agenda Item, that teachers be not required to be certified or enrolled in alternative certification programs. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Andrew Gonzalez, and I'm a former teacher and community member in District 6. I'm calling this evening to comment on Item 10.1 and 16.1. Regarding 10.1, Texas is currently the most dangerous state for construction workers, and as a former teacher in the district, I know many, many of our families work in construction, and that a vote in favor of ensuring safe working conditions and appropriate training will not only expand worker protections, but is also a favor, a vote in favor of the health of our students and their families. I ask that the board vote to approve the resolution on worker protections and ensure that AISD is committed to workplace accountability. I also ask that the board reconsider a major change in teacher certification requirements. Please require any teachers hired without an existing Texas or out-of-state teacher certification to be enrolled, at the very least, in an alternative education certification program. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Sam Correio. I'm an AFT member with the Texas American Federation of Teachers and a community member of Austin ISD. I'm providing a public comment on Agenda Item 10.1, the board resolution to expand worker protections. This board resolution will require Austin Independent School District to ensure a living wage for all workers under contract. As some of you may recall, many years ago, Austin ISD adopted a prevailing wage act under the Davis Bacon Act. This was a great first step and helped us achieve a living wage for many of our construction workers. However, these prevailing wages do not set a living wage for every worker and classification. The truth is simple. Every worker deserves to earn a wage that allows them to support a family in our city, and we can do that by extending Austin ISD's minimum wage to construction workers. I ask that the board votes to approve the resolution on worker protections to ensure that Austin Independent School District is providing a living wage to all workers. Thank you so much.
My name is Sal. I'm a community member. I'm speaking on behalf of Agenda Item 10.1, Worker Protection Resolution. Speaking in favor of worker protections, schools that are built in the district, especially in Austin ISD, should be built with the highest protections for workers. Build these schools, especially since it's public taxpayer money that is being used to fund the construction of these schools. There should be a pipeline for, for workers that are from the community, especially Austin ISD students who might not find college to be their, their pathway to build these schools. And also, parents who, who live in the district, who build these schools should be treated fairly in order to provide resources for students and ensure that there is a good learning environment at home and at schools. For this reason, I'm speaking in favor of the work protections that are crucial to equity in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? And I can't see Trustee Boswell on the screen. Trustee Boswell? Yes, ma'am?
I'm, yes, I'm here. I, I don't have a question. I was just turning my video off because my signal was weak. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions or clarifications? If not, as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. We will now move to the consent agenda. Trustees, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? Trustee Singh.
I believe some have already been pulled for separate vote. I actually did want to have, it's only because I have a question about it that I'll pull it for separate vote. And let me find which one it is. It was the one about the policy on the hair.
Christine, can, can Trustee Singh ask the question when we're doing the consent agenda? Or should we pull it?
Yeah, I mean, strictly speaking, I think the point of consent is, is you vote on it and you don't talk about it. So, it just, just my-
Yeah, okay. Which item?
Okay, so I think it's 14.3.
14.3. And is there a second?
I'll second because of the point of order. I've always said that folks shouldn't need a second to pull a consent item.
Duly noted. Duly noted. Trustees, are there any other items that we need to pull from the consent agenda item? Okay, so Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a motion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'd like to pull 16.1, please.
16 point-
It's already pulled.
It's already pulled, Trustee Boswell.
Oh, it's already pulled. Thank you.
One more, one more time. Are there any other items that we want to pull from the agenda? If not, Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Of course. I make a motion to approve consent agenda items. Let's see, there's a lot. Nine, wait, is 9.1 one of the items? No. Okay, I should know that by now. Okay, so 10.1 through 10.9, 11.1, 12.1 through 12.7, 13.1 through 13.3, 14.1, and 14.2, and And that's it. Oh, wait, hold on a second. Dr. Reach, I'm making sure. Okay. Yes, that's it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Anderson, okay. Trustees, are there any, is there any discussion on any of these consent items? So, having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve consent agenda items 10.1 through 10.9, 11.1, 12.1 to 12.7, 13.1, 13.3, 14.1, 14.2, and 14.4. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. So we will now move to those items pulled from the agenda. So the first item is 14.3. So Trustee Singh, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve item 14.3.
Okay.
And that's related to student conduct and dress code.
Great. And then we have a second. Trustee Foster seconded that motion. So trustees, any questions or comments? I knew you had a question.
Yeah, and I apologize, this just came to me right before the meeting. I just wanted to double-check that this new policy did not conflict with any other policies that we had related to, like, extracurricular activities. So the policy that we're approving states that students can have any hairstyle, and I just wanted to make sure that applied to extracurriculars as well, like for cheerleading or other activities.
Thank you, Trustee Singh. So there's really two parts to this policy. We only brought one forward, and if you'll indulge me, I'd like to very briefly explain that. So this policy right here with the dress code was brought forward at the same time that we were also discussing FFH, which is our discrimination pol, non-discrimination policy for students. And that's actually where we started when looking at how we could incorporate what, what we know as the Crown Act, which was a question from Trustee Anderson, and how we could incorporate into the policy. So when we were discussing that as the policy committee, it was determined that it made sense to also add this into the dress code, and we were ready to do both at the same time. However, what occurred is when we sent, part of our process is to share with the Texas Association of School Boards, here's changes we want to make. And when we shared FFH with them, they said, oh, we have a change that also we're bringing forward because of a legislative change that you'll need to update FFH for. And so we said, okay, well, then we'll bring that back to the policy committee. And when we went back, it was decided, well, the dress code's ready to go, so let's send that forward to the board. FFH, however, we needed to get that change in there, so it will come in October. And I'm happy to tell you the language we were in-
No, no. That's fine. I must have missed that. I feel like you had this discussion earlier, and I somehow just, so thank you for indulging me. And, sounds good.
Trustees, any other questions? So, having a motion by Trustee Singh and a second by Trustee Foster to approve Agenda Item 14.3, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais and on the screen. We will move to abstention items for separate vote. Trustees, do we have a motion to approve 15.1 to 15.3?
Yes, and, okay, so, Item 15.1, I move we approve Item 15.1, Approval of Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement between the District and the City of Austin Regarding Use and Maintenance of the Area Surrounding Austin High School. 15.2, Approval of an Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Austin and Austin ISD for Student Use of Athletic Fields Owned by the City of Austin. And 15.3, Renewal of Interlocal Agreement with City of Austin for Family Resource Centers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Trustees, any discussion, is there any discussion on these items? So, hearing none, and having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve Items 15.1, 15.2, and 15.3, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All, and so the motion, did, Trustee Sapata, did you raise your hand? Yeah. So the motion passes by all those on the dais. Trustee Singh, do we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 15.4?
Yes, I move we approve Item 15.4, Student Teacher Preparation Program MOU with the University of Texas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustees, is there any discussion on this item? So, hearing none, and having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve Item 15.4, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those opposed, all those abstaining, so the motion passes, one, two, three, four, the motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed, and showing one abstention from Trustee Foster. Trustee Singh, do we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 16.1?
Yes, I move we approve Item 16.1, Approval of the District of Innovation Plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, trustees, is there any discussion on these items? And I believe, you, you have a question? Or-
I have, I have a question, but if somebody raised their hand, I can go, because I'm looking at, I've got a question.
I think, I think I'm going to recognize Trustee Singh, who has a motion.
Thank you. All right, so, this is, this was, we heard a lot of public comment about this. This was regarding District of Innovation, and I really want to thank Dr. Mays for the conversations we've had prior to the meeting. So I'd like to propose an amendment. It's on page seven of the District of Innovation Plan. There's a sentence in there that reads, "The district is committed for any teachers hired under this exemption without an existing Texas teacher certification or out-of-state certification to enroll, or require the individual to enroll in an alternative education certification program wherever possi, whenever possible." And I would like to add after that the following. Teachers hired for any early childhood through sixth-grade positions without an existing Texas or out-of-state teacher certification will be required to enroll in an, in an alternative certific, education certification program.
So we have a motion to amend, the, the motion to approve Item 16.1, as stated by, by Trustee Singh. Is there a second?
Second.
So Trustee Lugo seconded. Okay, trustees, any discussions on this particular amendment? So I, I just also want to thank Dr. Mays for his, for his discussions around this particular item to ensure that we have individuals who are certified teachers to teach, especially in our Title I schools. Trustee Boswell?
Yes, thank you for the conversations. I'm working through this, and I have a question that maybe Dr. Reach can answer. I'm not sure about how this differs. I know Texas as a state does allow waivers similar to what is in this proposal, and I'm curious about the nuance, if you know, of how this differs from what the state allows. Is this basically codifying what the state does in our DOI, DOI plan without having to get a state waiver? Or is it distinct in some way?
Thank you. It, it is distinct because it makes it part of the district process. The waiver process through the state is slightly different, and Ms. Hoesak may be able to explain in a little bit more detail how that waiver process works. And there is also a waiver for CTE, but it also is a little different, and people cannot start teaching until they have that waiver with the CTE.
That's correct. Good evening, Board. That is correct. So we have, you have to get Commissioner approval on those, on the waivers for the, for the district, the local certification. So DOI gives us the ability to, to go ahead and get those teachers in place and teaching under that.
Thank you, Ms. Hoesak. I appreciate that. That's helpful. So it basically streamlines what we could do otherwise?
It does. It does give us a streamlined process, and it has for some time with, with the DOI plan that we've had in place. So again, it, it's a much more streamlined process, and, and again, we are encouraging every single one of our teachers to, that we are putting in place to enter into that alternative certification program immediately.
Encouraging or with the modification requiring?
So, with the new amendment, it would be with requirement for EC through six, but in previous DOI, it, it has been for CTE and LoT. And so we had certainly encouraged, we have had some teachers that have, for example, in CTE, that have said, this is what I want to do. I'm coming to you with an, with, for example, an engineering certification, and that have not wanted to switch careers, but have provided that industry expertise. And so we certainly want them in that program as well, but we have not forced that issue with those specific secondaries before.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you. Trustee Boswell, any other questions? If not, I'm going to recognize Trustee Anderson.
My comment is related to Strategy III under Academic Excellence. So, your strategy talks about quality college and career programs for students from marginalized communities, but I go and I look at your committee members, and unless I'm reading it wrong, like, where, where are the students from District One campuses? Like, so, are you try, are you creating a strategy to help marginalized students, but yet you don't have them at the table to, to be a part of the discussion to, to tell you how to best serve them? So I hope this was an oversight? It was a comment, it wasn't a question.
Okay.
What page is that?
What page was that on?
Page four.
Page four, just for a reference. I think, Dr. Reach, did you have a response, or did you want to?
No, I, I'm thankful for the comment. We do need to get better at encouraging both more student participation period, but also students from schools who traditionally have not been included on these types of committees. You know, I will just say that our process in the past has been who's interested, and then taking a list from that. And it, we have seen that typically a few schools have the majority of those students who show interest. So we need to make intentional effort to recruit at some of our other campuses. We need to get better at that.
So you have, I think I saw Dr. Welch, and I think Mr. Garcia on there, so that's a great opportunity right there.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson. So I'm going to go back to the motion at hand. So there's a motion to amend the certification language on page seven that Trustee Singh articulated and was seconded by Trustee Lugo. So if there's not any other questions, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand. So, Trustee Boswell, were you voting for the amendment? Thank you. So the motion passes by all those on the dais. So now, we go back to the motion as amended, which was made by Secretary Singh and seconded by Trustee Anderson to approve Agenda Item 16.1. Are there any questions there, trustees? Oh, I've lost Trustee Boswell here for a second, but Trustee Ashley has a question.
Not so much a question, as just a comment. As we are very aware of the teacher shortage that we face, not only in AISD, but in-
not only in A I S D, but not only in central Texas, not only in the state of Texas, but nationally. I am going to take this moment to tell everybody what an incredible profession teaching is. And all of those incredible college students who I am sure are watching our board meeting right now. I, I hope and, and, and say little prayers every night that we have more and more people taking the time to come into this incredible profession. And it, they don't have to come to it in the traditional ways, and so few people know about that. And, um, I say that as somebody who currently has a lovely eighteen-year-old who currently is trying to decide what to do with her life. And I love that we're making this decision at eighteen, um, when, you know, she knows everything, because if you ask her, she'll tell you. So I, I hope that people will take this opportunity to recognize this is an incredible profession. This is a profession that we, as a community, can model the respect for. In so many ways, um, I will now speak directly to our state legislature and say, please allow us the opportunity to honor, to provide the respect monetarily speaking, um, through changes in our current funding formula that would allow us to show respect in that way as a board. I would hope that we also, as a community, take this time. I hope all parents who are watching will tell their teachers thank you and how much you respect them, that they will tell their students how much they respect the teachers that are working for them, so that we can take this profession exactly where it deserves to be, which is a place of respect in our society. So thank you for that point of privilege. And, um, I, it felt like the opportune moment as we were discussing what is a great challenge.
Trustee Ashy, it's also worth noting that trustees have one year once they leave the board before they can come to work for the district. And, uh, knowing that you have an early childhood certification, uh, November twenty twenty-three, write that note down.
I'm ready.
One year. Ditto.
And that would be great modeling by trustee Ashy for all the, for, for, for all of the high school and college students who are listening to our board meeting at nine oh nine P M. on a Thursday night.
I recall when, uh, Dr. Lizalde identified some TAs who, for whatever reason, were not able to pursue their dream job of becoming a teacher. And then, uh, she was able to recruit. And I'm wondering if we're still doing that, because I have met amazing TAs who continue to want to become a teacher. I mean, they're doing it anyway. So I'm curious if we're doing that. And the other thing is that, you know, I don't have a degree, but it doesn't dictate what I can teach or what I can learn. So I don't want to, I, I'm not saying that teachers shouldn't be certified, but when I ran, organized an E S L program of two hundred and fifty people who wanted to learn English, and John Moore, the director, and his wife, Della Maymore, were, came out and helped teach at San Jose Catholic Church. And the teachers were all members of the church. When we got the funding for that close classes to continue, well, we had to require certifications as a teacher. And we lost a hundred students, adults, because they were not getting connected. It was a different kind of teaching. So I, I don't think a teacher is, a certificate makes them the best teacher. It helps, but it's people's heart who care about our students and love, and love to learn and teach are the ones we're looking for. So, um, community, there's a lot of you out there that think you can't do it. I, I never thought I see myself here, and I don't have a degree. But I, we can all learn. And so, um, thank you for that amendment, because I think that is also very helpful, that they know that there is that support to help them become that great teacher that they've always dreamed of becoming. Thank you.
Trustee, to answer your question about, about recruiting our TAs into teacher pipeline, that is absolutely occurring. And in fact, that's one of my favorite places to go looking for talent, because you want to talk about some folks that are just really centered on students and their success. And, and that's really our, our TAs, truthfully. So, in fact, I had the pleasure of speaking to one of our wonderful TAs today, Ms. Green, if you're watching. Uh, I, I hope that you're listening. But in full agreement with that, and so, um, we, we are obviously, uh, talking about a, a situation to where we are in a shortage, and we can do some intentional things to directly work against being in that shortage. And so this is, um, somewhat of a, of a stopgap measure. But we are an organization that absolutely loves our teachers and needs to do a better job of investing in them and telling them how much we appreciate them every single day. Because if we do not do that, we will continue to, to churn. And so the goal is to get out of the churn, to make sure that, that we do show them the love and the respect that they deserve and to, and to take care of our folks. So thank you for that.
Thank you, trustees. Other questions? Okay, um, hearing no other questions, and having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Anderson to approve agenda item sixteen point one as amended, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. So the motion passes by all those on the dais. Trustee Singh, do we have a motion to approve agenda item sixteen point two?
Yes, I move we approve, approve item sixteen point two, the F Y twenty twenty-three twenty-four budget development calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trust, uh, trustee, I think I heard trustee Anderson. Uh, trustees, is there any discussion on this item? Trustee Singh.
I just want to, um, thank, uh, Mr. Ramos and Dr. Mays for making some of the changes, um, that reflect engagement with our community every month. I think that's going to really be helpful for all of us. And I also appreciated the emphasis on the equity by design model as well. So thank you so much for including that.
Thank you, trustee Sabata.
So, um, many of our speakers were talking about a living wage at which I truly support. So where would that come? Would it be in this, or how will we make that happen?
So, yes, that would be part of our budgeting process. Early on in January, uh, we will come to you with some budget assumptions. Those would include budget priorities that we would come up as an administrative team. Then we go out to the community and our stakeholders, the, the C A Cs, the D A Cs, and, uh, have those conversations and see if our priorities are the same as what our community is asking for. Then we bring that back to the board. Compensation is going to be a huge piece of that. And so we are going to look at prioritizing what areas do we really need to focus on.
So does that mean that if this bond passes, then that's going to be easier to do that?
If the bond passes, it does provide us a huge opportunity to meet some of our goals, especially in compensation.
Great, thank you.
I would be remiss, uh, trustee Sabata, to also mention that, um, the administration did agree in, during our last discussion, that under the budget development calendar, we'd also do deep dives around special education, bilingual education, and mental health services. So I think we're, we're seeing that as, I think, with Dr. Mays's discussion, th- those are the board's priorities. But just to clarify, the part that trustee Singh was talking about is going to the community and seeing what their priorities are and seeing how they align with, with ours as well. So, a- and we appreciate everything you're doing to, to work through that with us. So trustees, any other questions? Okay, if not, having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Anderson to approve agenda item sixteen point two, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes by all those on the dais. Our last item is sixteen point three, adoption of ordinances setting tax rate and certain exemptions. Tonight's agenda does require us to read the entire motion into the minutes, and also requires that we read two different motions. So trustee Singh, do we have our first motion to approve on item sixteen point three?
Yes, and I just, okay, I want to just ask a clarifying question. The number's here, so it would be like point nine nine six, six cents. Okay, just to make sure. It's getting late already. I know, seriously. Uh, okay, so, um, so yes. I move that we approve to adopt an ordinance levying an ad valerum tax of point nine nine six six cents, which includes a tax rate at point eight eight three six, uh, cents per, per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for the maintenance and operation of the public free schools and a tax rate of, a tax rate at point one one three zero cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation in order to provide a sinking fund to pay principal and interest on bond indebtedness of the Austin Independent School District for the tax year twenty twenty-two. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. And the tax rate will effectively be raised by eleven point six percent and will decrease taxes for maintenance and operations on a one hundred thousand dollar home by approximately one hundred eighty-one dollars. The adopted tax rate of point nine nine six six cents represents a reduction of six and a half cents from last year's tax rate, representing the lowest tax rate adopted by Austin Independent School District in the past twenty-nine years.
Is there a second?
Second.
So trustees, is there any discussion on this item? Trustee Lugo, do you, you want to recommend that trustee Singh read the entire motion again? Uh, trustee Boswell, any questions? That was pretty direct. That was direct. That was pretty direct. So, hearing none, hearing no more discussion, and having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Sabata to approve agenda item sixteen point three as read by trustee Singh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Trustee Singh, do we have our second motion to approve agenda item sixteen point three?
Yes, I move that all properties defined by the city of Austin as his, as historical landmark properties be granted a partial tax exemption pursuant to that certain ordinance adopted by the Austin I C D Board of Trustees on April ninth nineteen seventy-nine, and as amended on September twelfth nineteen ninety-four, August twenty-ninth two thousand five, and June eighteenth twenty twelve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustees, is, is there any discussion on this particular item? I'm looking this way. Trustees, any questions? And if not, having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Anderson to approve agenda item sixteen point three, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. We will now recess the open meeting at nine twenty P M. And move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five five one point oh seven four, five five one point oh seven two, five five one point oh seven three, five five one point oh eight seven, five five one point oh seven six, and five five one point oh seven one. For our viewers at home, this concludes our live broadcast. When we are finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you all for joining us and have a good evening. Good evening. We will now reconvene the open meeting at eleven oh three P M. Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Anderson to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. The meeting is now adjourned at eleven oh three P M.